Gonna get started here. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting and study session of the Azusa Unified School District. Today is March 20th, 2018. If we can please stand for the flag salute. Thank you and welcome, everyone, and everyone watching at home this evening. We're now moving on to roll call. Vice President Shilinin Cruz Gonzalez.
Here.
Clerk Paul Nakashin.
Present.
Board Member Yolanda Rodriguez Peña.
Here.
And Board Member Jerry Bibles Vogel.
Here.
And myself, President Helen Jaramillo. We are all present tonight. We're on approval of the agenda, 4.1, approval of the agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a first by Shilinin Cruz Gonzalez.
Second.
Second by Yolanda Rodriguez Peña. We do have our student board member here tonight, Robert Frejo. Thank you so much for being here, sir. What is the student preferential vote for tonight, sir? Alright, yes. Thank you, please place your votes. Thank you. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We are now moving on to recognitions and awards. This is an incredible, awesome event of the evening where we get to recognize some of the work that's being done in the school district. And tonight, we are on 5.1. This is an opportunity for the board to recognize Dalton Elementary for being chosen as a 2017-2018 Project Lead the Way Distinguished Schools. So, big honor, round of applause for that. And we have our principal, Laura Clark. And Diane Ruiz, who is going to be speaking tonight. Yes, welcome, please.
Good evening, board, and family and friends. I just want to thank you for this opportunity to come here today and have Dalton be able to celebrate the experience of PLTW program. It has been a great journey for two and a half years, and we want to thank you so much for all you've done to give us the monies and the support that you have for our kids to be able to experience this evening. I have half of my class, I'm a four-five combo, and I'd like to have my fifth graders give you a full presentation on PLTW this evening. Thank you.
Alright. Welcome. Super excited. There you go, there you go, that's the way to do it. That's the way to do it.
Good evening, school board members, district officials, families, and guests. We would like to introduce ourselves as Mrs. Ruiz's fifth grade students from Dalton Elementary School. Tonight, we will share a presentation about our PLTW program K-5.
What is PLTW? Project Lead the Way, PLTW is a nation's leading provider of K-12 STEM programs. PLTW's world-class projects and problem-based curriculum combined with high-quality teacher expertise helps students develop the skills they need to be successful in their future education and careers. At Dalton School K-5, our teachers instruct us in a wide range of activities for all students to stretch above and beyond the average school programs. What is PT...I mean...
You got it.
Our project lead...
You're good, you're good, you're good.
Our world-class curriculum are: The Launch Program at Dalton Elementary, The Gateway Program at Slauson Middle School, and Azusa High School. Subjects include Engineering, Computer Science, and Biomedical Science. College and career is our goal.
Wow. That's the way to do it.
PLTW Launch K-5. Studies show that students decide as early as second or third grade whether they like and think they are good at math and science. PLTW is designed to capture students' interest in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math to spark a lifelong passion.
Our students use touch technology, robotics, and everyday materials to explore topics such as energy, light, sound motion, stability, and gravity. We will leave Dalton Elementary with confidence in the STEM subjects, ready to continue our journey at Slauson Middle School, Azusa High, and beyond.
Wow.
PLTW Launch Engineering Modules. Here are engineering modules. Kindergarten has structure and function exploring design. First grade, Light and Sound, observing sun, moon, and stars. Second grade, Material Science, properties of matter. Third grade, Stability and Motion, Science of Flight. Fourth grade, Energy Collisions. And finally, Fifth, which includes Robotics and Automation Challenge.
Next is the Biomedical Science Modules. Kindergarten Instruction, Function, Human Body. First is Health and Wellness. Second is Animal Adaptations. Third is Variation of Traits. Fourth is Input/Output Computer System. And fifth is Infection Detection.
Our final module is Computer Science. Kindergarten covers Animals and Algorithms. First, Animated Storytelling. Second, Groups and Games.
Third, Technology Toolbox. Fourth, Input/Output Human Brain. And finally, Fifth, the best grade, of course, is Infection, Modeling and Simulation.
Here are PLTW memories from the past years. Our first photo is Mrs. Rubio's first grade class exploring light and sound, there testing sound and water. Next is Mrs. Miranda's fourth grade class studying energy and collisions.
Ms. Weezer's second grade class examined erosion and how to prevent a landslide. Now we have Ms. Reven exploring structure and function. They were building a freestanding structure. Finally, guess what class this is? Of course, our fifth grade class researching germs and infection. We were playing a game that involved how germs spread from person to person.
Our first board displays the beginning of our module called Infection Detection. We had to simulate who students who were carriers came into contact with victims.
Here we have students who placed a germ powder on their hands. As you can see, the UV light displays a potential germ that can be transferred from person to person.
At the end of the unit, we studied a mystery school of students who had symptoms under a list of diseases. We collaborated in groups which disease they had. Ended up in a heavy debate, but we kept it respectful.
Thank you for listening to our presentation about our PLTW program at Dalton School. Please come visit Dalton. We have a final message for you that we hope you enjoy.
Congratulations, students, you did a beautiful job. I was gonna ask you all these questions, but you already answered them for me. Thank you very much. Great, beautiful job. We want to award you with this certificate from the Azusa Unified School District Board of Education hereby recognizes Dalton Elementary School for being honored as a Project Lead the Way Launch Distinguished School for providing broad access to transformative, hands-on learning opportunities for students. Presented on this day, 20th day of March, 20th day of March, 2018, signed by Dr. Linda Kaminski, our superintendent, and Helen Jaramillo, our board president. Thank you, students. And can I please have the parents stand? Are the parents here, some parents? We want to thank you also. And the teacher? Thank you, all your teachers, and all the students, and parents. We couldn't do it without you. Thank you.
Grand finale.
Project Lead the Way, it's here to stay. Every day, never on a delay. We're on the pathway. Scientists, engineers, mathematicians, technicians, lead the way!
Wow. Wow. Wow, 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 wow. Another round of applause. Fifth grade, fifth grade, elementary school. You guys did absolutely amazing. By a show of hands, how many of you...was that your first time at a podium microphone? Wow, you guys did fantastic. You guys should be proud of yourselves. It's difficult for me, and I'm 44, and it's hard to sit up here in front of a microphone. And you did an amazing job tonight, so congratulations and keep up the great work. And Ms. Ruiz, I was watching you in the front row, just glowing. That must be an incredible feeling to watch your students come up and deliver like that. That was incredible. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so it continues. We're now moving on to 5.2. This is an opportunity for us as a Board of Education to recognize Azusa High School Girls Soccer Team. And this is the first time in Azusa High School's 62-years' history that a soccer team has made it to a CIF championship game. And Dr. Gomez.
So, good evening, board, cabinet, Dr. Kaminski, Kathy, and the wonderful Robert Frejo. So, I just want to say, very briefly, we're all very proud of our Aztec soccer team. They measured, they went through every challenge with regards to field, through injuries, through any other type of challenge that they could have had. This team not only stepped up to the challenge, but they met it. And the first team in 62 years in Azusa High School history to play for the CIF championship game. And if it wasn't for those first two minutes of the game, we would be division champions, right? But they're just a great group of players. And for everybody here, not only from Azusa High School, but from the community, from Gladstone that was following us on social media, giving the team their love and their props. If we haven't said it before, we're so proud of you all, especially our seven seniors that are gonna be graduating. But we have several of our underclassmen that are gonna come back even stronger. And I know Coach Nadine's gonna come up here and talk a little bit. Coach Hector, if you guys wanna come around, and Coach Jaleen. But just before I pass it off to them, Aztecs, I want you to look into the crowd, make eye contact with your parents, make eye contact with the community, also make eye contact with our awesome teachers that are out there that were supporting you since day one. Because of CIF, you missed many school days, and they were the ones backing you up to make sure, hey, you need to turn this as homework assignment. And there's a lot of teachers here that are here to support you once again. So, Aztecs, from me, from everybody out here, we want to give you one last round of applause and congratulations for making history. So, I want to hand it off to Coach Nadine.
Alright, I want to first start off by saying thank you to all of you for this huge recognition. I think that a lot of...I think that a lot of people...it's a coach voice, so I'm used to just yelling out, sorry. You know, a lot of people don't know what kind of a big deal this is. You know, 62 years, it's a long time. You know, I played at Azusa High School, and that's all we wanted. You know, and it's nice, you know, as a coach, to be able to get this group of girls and to be able to be here and be recognized for this. Second, I want to thank our parents. Parents that are driving three and a half hours to go watch these girls play. We just have an amazing group of parents, you know, bringing us drinks, you know, Gatorades and waters, and, you know, what else? Oranges, and whatever it is that these girls needed, the parents had my back, that's for sure. Third, I would not be able to do this on my own. And, you know, without the help with, you know, my dad and my sister, who's my assistant coach and the JV coach, it would not be possible. I can't do it alone, that's for sure. And third, or fourth, these girls right here, they're an amazing group of girls. The way they...they went through a lot of challenges. You know, from anything to having a hard time getting girls coming out there in the beginning, to, you know, having only 10 on the field that were having to play, you know, some of our games, to eventually coming out with 17 girls. You know, they went through a lot. And to be able to stand up here and hold that runner up, even if we did lose that championship game, we made it. And that's what matters, we made it there. And so, I just want to say that I am so proud of you guys. You know, your accomplishments to our six seniors that I'm sad to see go. These six seniors, they hold a big part of my heart, and so...but we got the rest of you guys, and next year, we're gonna take it to them, and we're gonna bring back the championship. I'm gonna say championship on there.
So, we are so proud of you guys. I know you guys have worked really hard this whole season. There was a lot of bad weather sometimes, but you guys really made us proud. Runner-up to CIF 2018, that is so awesome, congratulations. So, I know this doesn't compare to that, but we do want to recognize you within our district, so I'm gonna read this out. The Azusa Unified School District Board of Education hereby recognizes Azusa High School Girls Varsity Soccer Team for a historic season culminating in an appearance in a CIF championship game and state playoffs. A first for the Azusa High School Soccer Program, presented on this date, the 20th day of March, 2018. Signed our superintendent Linda Kaminski and our board president Helen Jaramillo. And I would ask for our parents of these students to please stand if you're in the audience. Any parents? We know...I know personally that soccer doesn't start freshman year, right? I'm sure a lot of you have been playing for a lot of years, and that takes dedication on the part of the parents to make sure kids are going to practice, going every Saturday to games. So, we really appreciate that dedication, and we appreciate your commitment to soccer. So, I just wanted to say one more thing before I take a picture, and that is, I don't know if you've heard or not, but we are the...we have been moving forward with our modernization bond to fix up the track and the field. Not...right. So, it would be focused on the track and then that field that you guys play on. So, it's gonna...it'll take a couple years, it doesn't happen overnight, but that is on our priority list right now.
Before you walk off, can we have each one of you just go by the podium and just say your name and the grade that you're in? We want to put a face to the name, for sure. Please, please do that.
My name is Karen Montalvo, and I'm a senior. And I just wanted to say, thank everybody once again, because it is a huge achievement. And being a senior, I am proud to have played with these girls, and proud that Coach came back, and that all three of them came back and helped us and supported us. And I know the program is gonna grow even stronger now, because we have built...we have made history, and I'm very proud to say that I was part of this team.
Don't be shy, you got this, you got this.
My name's Haley Garcia, and I'm a sophomore at Azusa High.
My name is Vanessa Perez, and I'm a sophomore at Azusa High.
My name is Alamaris Arteaga, and I'm a senior.
My name's Leslie Amador, and I'm a senior.
My name is Jacqueline Campos, aka Rosie, and I'm a sophomore at Azusa High.
My name is Kathy Martinez, and I'm a senior at Azusa High.
Ms. Amber Sabao says, I'm a junior at Azusa High.
My name is Carla Pampa, and I'm a sophomore at Azusa High.
My name is Bonka Mihia, and I'm a sophomore at Azusa High.
My name is Madison Papura, and I'm a freshman.
My name is Jennifer Arroyo, and I'm a junior at Azusa High.
Hi, my name is Monica Perez, and I'm a junior at Azusa High.
Awesome, ladies, thank you very much, congratulations. Thank you to our coaches and all the work, and the teachers and the community for this wonderful, wonderful recognition and honor to this entire city. Thank you, bro valley, you guys are awesome. Thank you very much. There you go. I'm sorry? If anyone tonight needs a translation, we do have translation equipment in the back, so please, if we...do we have a contact person? Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, now moving on to 6.0, items from the floor, public comment. On agenda or non-agenda items. 6.1, this is an opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda or non-agenda items. No action can be taken on non-agenda items. Individual speakers may be allowed up to three minutes to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda item. Prior to addressing the board, please fill out the request to speak, public comment, blue card, and submit it to the board secretary. We do have several tonight. And first up, we have Mr. Robert Ranger, followed by Dr. Kami Thomas. Sir.
I don't know, this is kind of a...that was kind of exciting. That was a lot of good stuff going on. My name is Robert Ranger, I'm one of the teachers that's been notified that my services will not be needed for next school year. I've worked for the district for over 20 years, and I've taken the business program into technology. In fact, I created a four-year information technology academy through the National Academy Foundation, where students are preparing to be college and career-ready. There's a lot of things to say about NAF, and some of the highlights in it is, within my program, kids get college credit for taking two classes and taking a test, and they get college credit for citrus. We also have the AP class, which I was trained over the summer to teach AP Computer Science Principles. And not only that, their senior year, which is really unique to our program, is that the seniors actually get an opportunity for a paid internship. So, not only do we train them for college or get them ready for college, we get them career-ready, so they understand. We're quite involved with business leaders throughout the area. I'm not sure exactly why I was put into this position, but it has been very traumatic for me, because I've worked so hard to do what I've done with this program. I was told at one time it was a budgetary thing. And I hope you understand that because three of my sections are sponsored by ROP, that there's a majority, if not half, of my pay for those three sections comes from the ROP fund, which you're under contract to keep. I do understand it comes from the general fund, but, you know, that's a program I don't think you're gonna get rid of, ROP. I was told that maybe it's my numbers that I was told, that I was low. Well, because over the summer I was trained for AP Computer Science course, we didn't even have it on the schedule for kids to take. And so, we started the school year, we started to try to fill those sections to get kids in. My academy, my four-year academy, this is my first year. I've got four years planned for these kids, and because this is my first year, and it is building a program, it's gonna take some time before I get all four years up and running. it's gonna take some time before I get all four years up and running. So, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope you change your minds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Kami Thomas?
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of my colleague Angel Cleney and the others here in the district who may be losing their positions next year. And I want to express my frustration with the poor choices that the district's making with this. And it's curious that a district that likes to tout that we're making students college and career-ready, that they're taking away the classes that can actually accomplish the school. And, um, thank you. It says very clearly in our mission statement and our vision statements that we want to make college and career-ready our students. And it needs to actually be acted upon for it to be credible in everyone's eyes. And so far, this district has given itself a reputation to make that a pretty empty promise. And to take away the career tech classes is contrary to what this district and the stakeholders actually want to do, which is to allow all students to be college and, not just and/or, but and, career-ready. By doing anything else, the district is not fulfilling that promise. And Angel and all the other dedicated teachers in this district are losing their jobs, and students are losing the valuable skills that they could have learned in these classes to indeed be career-ready. These sweet little fifth graders have these wonderful STEM opportunities. These girls have this fabulous soccer program. But yet, you are going to disenfranchise the kids who could have otherwise had a great career opportunity with the programs that we have. And it is all well and good that our schools have AP and IB, and I'm one of the IB coordinators. I do the CAFS program over at Azusa High School, so I know the value of an education and being prepared for college. But this district is really, truly taking things out from under the rug of these students who may not be on the trajectory to be college and career-ready. Besides the fact that this district is not even A through G graduation requirement-ready, that in itself is another problem. But it's simply systematically producing students that are ill-equipped for both college and career. It is nothing else than shameful that the poor choices on the part of the administration are going to have dire consequences on the students who deserve to have choice. Any other district, these kids would have choices. And honestly, this district needs to stop making the empty promise to be college and career-ready, making irresponsible decisions. And honestly, I think the job needs to be done, that they were tasked to do, which is to make every single student college and career-ready. Thank you.
Roland Souza? Roland Souza? Followed by Evelyn Vasquez.
Good evening, board members. Is it on? Community members. My name is Marisol Roland Souza. I retired from the US Army back in 2005, after twenty years of service. Currently, I'm the Army Instructor at Gladstone High School. I have many years of experience. I also taught at LA Unified School District for eleven years as a senior Army Instructor and the Army Instructor. JRTC stands for Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. It was established here nationally back in 1916. It's been part of our district since 1995. The mission of ROTC is to motivate young people to become better citizens, and that's what we try to instill. Gladstone High School and Azusa High School ROTC program have two instructors. I am here this evening urging you not to reduce the number of instructors at your school from two to one. By doing so, you do create a violation of the contract with the Department of Defense and the school district. A couple violations include paragraph 2 Delta, 2D. It states that each program will have a minimum of one officer, one non-commissioned officer. Career plans in the district include only hiring one instructor for next school year. Another violation would be paragraph 2J, which basically says that the student enrollment must be at least a hundred students in the program, or at least ten percent of the population. At both schools, Azusa High School, Gladstone, have met this requirement. And the final violation would be that the paragraph states that if you choose to dis-erole, or either party does not want ROTC, either the government or school district, there is a one-year notification, and I did not receive that. I believe that ROTC is really important. I believe in the curriculum. I've seen it work on many different students over the years. I'm here this evening to help the program, because I'm not really about myself. I'm not worried about it. I'm fine. We do many different things in ROTC. Here at Gladstone High School, last school year, the students logged over 1,960 community service hours, you know, benefiting our school and our community. I don't think it's possible if we could put a price tag on developing citizenship for our students. So, I think it's a really strong program. Some of the goals that ROTC tries to do is promote citizenship, develop leadership, creative and critical thinking, to communicate effectively, to improve physical fitness, strengthen positive self-motivation, train to work as a member of a team, and finally, to graduate from high school. The curriculum is very enriched, and I believe that ROTC is really important for our school district. So, with that, I do have a petition signed by 170 parents, teachers, and administrators, along with students that I could provide for you. I want to thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Evelyn Vasquez, followed by Kathy Martinez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Evelyn Vasquez, and I am a current IB student. I'm here on behalf of Azusa High School, because I am upset with the fact that you're trying to cut our school's fashion program. Some of you may ask yourselves, why am I here if this decision will have a direct impact on me, since I will no longer be in this school next year? However, Azusa High has become my second home, and I want to continue seeing it thrive. I took fashion my sophomore year, and I gained so much practical skills that I have helped me, that have helped me in my everyday life, like sewing, ironing, pressing. I even learned how to model. I took fashion during fourth period, which was right after my math pre-calculus class, in which I struggled a lot. Taking fashion after math class was a great stress reliever. It would help, it would help me forget about all my struggles in other classes, and it gave me an opportunity to use my creative side of the brain. This class wasn't all about fashion. I have never been a big fan about history, but fashion sparked my interest in history after we learned all about women empowerment. Ms. Cleney made me feel empowered for being a woman, and she told me to never let the fact that I am a woman be an obstacle for me to follow my dreams. For those who are aware about the IB program, you know that students need to write a 4,000-word extended essay on any topic of our choice. I decided to write mine about women's empowerment in America along the years. And my research question was, at the turn of the 20th century, how were women exercising their voice through fashion and after receiving the right to vote? And if it wasn't for me having previous knowledge in fashion, and for Ms. Cleney's help in guiding me along the process of my paper, my paper would have never turned out as strong as it did. It wasn't Ms. Cleney's obligation to help me, but being the great person and teacher she is, she decided to make time for me and help me in my research paper, which I really appreciate her for. The fashion design class, along with other programs you guys are trying to cut, are important programs that actually teach us skills that we will use after high school, and they attract more students to attend their schools. I find it unbelievable that the district can allocate money to give the superintendent a raise, yet they cannot allocate money to keep paying for these programs. The Azusa School District is all about making their students college and career-ready, but I don't see that continuing to happen if we get rid of all these programs. I really hope you reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Kathy Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Martinez, and I am currently an IB student at Azusa High School. And I am here today to fight to keep the fashion and interior design programs at Azusa High School. My experience with fashion and interior design began when I entered as a freshman at Azusa High School. I heard that creative fashion was considered an A through G class, so I signed up and began the class. At first, I thought I could simply use this class to fill up my requirement, but I was shocked to find out that it was nothing like a regular class. The assignments we were given helped me cultivate skills that I never knew could be exhibited. We did everything from presenting the fashion, presenting the fashion used from different time periods to making shorts for students at Lee Elementary. This helped me understand that creative fashion was not just another class to fill up my A through G requirement, but a class that armed me with the skills to use for a lifetime. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to continue in the fashion and interior design program until this semester due to the fact of scheduling problems. Once I was able to take interior design this semester, I found that it helped me shape my everyday life. By eliminating the fashion and interior design programs, this illustrates the inefficiency of the Azusa Unified School District to do their jobs. That administration that this community has been burdened with is tearing the students and their families apart. Taking away our electives, tearing our teachers and instructors, treating our teachers and instructors unfairly, eliminating classes that our students care for. What are you doing? If you are wondering why students are attempting to transfer out of our district, I can spare some free advice. Stop dismembering our district with your bogus plans and initiatives, because they do not work.
I understand that funds are limited, but I also know that we are supposed to have someone in charge of finances. It is our job to allocate their funds in a fair and efficient manner to ensure that our electives and programs can continue to run. So, I beg of you, please do your jobs and stop misallocating our funds. Students, teachers, parents, and I bet even you want to see these programs in our school. I know that you are in a position of making hard decisions, but unfortunately, I have to admit that the situation is of your own making. If there's absolutely no way for these programs to be implemented after you have done absolutely everything to try to keep them, then I understand. However, what I don't understand is why these programs and teachers are being cut when our leaders are being secured financially. These electives are what makes schools fun. They are what boost morality and make people look forward to attending school. Therefore, I hope that you can take what I say into consideration and make changes necessary to bring these programs back and foster contentment instead of contempt.
Elsa Hodge, followed by Sharon Both.
Good evening, board. As a parent of school-aged children, oh my God, I can't even, sorry, and an educator, I am concerned about the direction that you are going and the choices that you are making about the future of this district. As you know, the district has decided to rip or let go three Career Technology High School teachers. These three teachers combined have over seventy-five years of teaching experience. That only is the district going to fire them, but they are refusing to find them a position elsewhere in the district. Moreover, you are leaving the students with less experienced teachers to teach them. These teachers have so much to offer these students in their field of expertise. To leave our students without career path electives is a disservice to everyone involved. It is just too bad that you cannot see that. I just finished reading a book called Mindset: The New Psychology of Success by Carol Dweck, Ph.D., and I found it very fitting to the dilemma that we are faced with tonight. The book talks about two kinds of leaders, in our case, leaders in the school district. Those with a fixed mindset and those with a growth mindset. I want you all to listen to the two definitions of both, and I want you to decide which one you are and which one you aspire to be. Fixed mindset leaders feel that they are inherently better than others. They may believe that their needs or feelings of the lesser people can be ignored. They do not care about the little guy, or the teachers or students in this case, and outright contemptuous of those people beneath them in the corporate ladder. At critical decision points, like the one we are faced with tonight, they opt in for what would make them feel good, or what would make them look good, over what would serve the long-term education goals. They blame others, they cover their mistakes, and they screw the little guy. Groupthink, by definition, states that everyone in a group starts thinking alike. No one disagrees, no one stands up and takes that critical stance. This lead, or, I'm sorry, this can lead to catastrophic decisions, and it can occur when people put unlimited faith in a leader. Growth mindset leaders are in turn just the opposite. They have positive views of their employees. They listen to their employees and their needs, and they learn from mistakes. At critical decision points, they do what's best for their company, or the students in this case, and they look at the long-term education goals. They work together to come up with a plan that best suits them. They are not concerned with making themselves look good, rather making what they know is the right choice. I will leave you with this. You were chosen to be on the AUSD Board to stand up for students' best interest. Do not lose yourself following someone else's opinion. Do what you believe in your heart is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Both, followed by Angel Cleney.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Both, and I'm currently working at Gladstone High School in our Career Technology Education Department. I've been employed in the district for twenty-five years and have seen many changes. Some good and some not good at all. It saddens me to see an entire program being cut from our high schools and being cut from our students' choices. This year, you have chosen to eliminate and drastically cut one of the most vital and important departments in our high schools, the Career Technology Department. You have chosen to lay off three out of six people in our department alone, cutting it in half. You have decided to take away the entire fashion classes, the entire interior design classes, entire foods and nutrition classes. Also, you've decided to take away one of our most important, and that is computer science. Our Career Technology Department is being ripped out of our education system when it is one of the most important components of our students' future. We not only teach our students subject matter, but also how to navigate through decision-making processes and choices they will have to make in life. We teach life skills. Skills like applied math, technical reading skills, leadership roles, time management, dealing with failure, group read, I'm sorry, job readiness, and personal decision-making. In our department, we work with a large number of special needs population, where they can more easily show their specialized talents. Some cannot show their competencies orally or in writing, but given tangible materials, they can show their abilities through a finished product. I ask, where will these students be placed next year? Where will they be placed to show their special abilities? A small percentage of our students in Azusa are actually college-bound. Statistically, the percentage of these students that are going to receive a college diploma is very small. And that is evident in our California system. Through your actions, you are now setting us up to serve a smaller number of our students. What about the majority of our students? What are you doing for them? How will they, how will you help them by cutting their choices? Recently, there, at Harvard University, there was an announcement made through the Harvard Gazette that they are now offering in college, live classes. They have found that current students are greatly lacking in the day-to-day decision-making skills that they have to deal with. How to handle money, how to budget their time, how to prioritize, how to organize, and how to take care of themselves in their daily lives. We are talking about CTE curriculum. Today, our society, in today's society, many parents are in survival mode. Today, our society, in today's society, many parents are in survival mode. We are servicing a high-transit population, we are servicing foster children, and servicing one-parent families. Parents are working hard to provide their students with the opportunity to graduate from high school. Many are not focused on teaching life skills. Students end up trying to teach themselves. I pray for our students in Azusa, I pray for our parents, and I pray for the Azusa School Board, and I ask that our board will reconsider some of their recent decisions. Thank you.
Angel Cleney, followed by Kayden Kaser, I believe, sorry.
Good evening. I'm Ms. Cleney, Angel Cleney from Azusa High School, the Fashion Interior Design and Home Economics teacher. I am told that the main two reasons for the cut, much like the business department, is because of low enrollment, low numbers, and low completers. I beg to differ that this is not true. We have the numbers, we have completers, we have career pathways set in place. I try to understand the logic of cutting an entire program that has numbers and that has completers. I'm often told that logic isn't part of school system, yet that's what we're supposed to be teaching. Logic would say, if there's a problem with numbers, you cut sections, you don't cut programs. I don't understand cutting an entire program where kids want to be and where kids learn. Currently, you are eliminating the opportunities of our current students to continue their program that they've been interested in, that they've enjoyed, that they've put a lot of time and energy, and that they've developed a career pathway in, and now they will not get. I've done some research, and I've handed out, I believe, I hope, you've gotten, the dashboard, and that's just the brief explanation of Azusa High School. The dashboard, my understanding, is the current report card. We no longer fall under the API, and that this is the current score, or report card for schools and districts. And the part that I printed out was the College and Career Indicator reports. Now, as I look through this, and I highlighted for you all the different sectors that are affected by the career pathways. We, right now, with cutting three teachers, you are cutting six career pathways at minimum. That seems like that wouldn't be very healthy for this part, or this sector, or this part of the dashboard. I'm trying to understand this. We, and in this, I see about six out of the ten sectors that we fall into. Like I said, that's cutting six career pathways by cutting a business teacher and two home economics teachers. We teach about the other six career pathways. Not every kid is going to be an engineer, not every kid is going into the medical pathway. Some want to be creative, some want to design, some want to be entrepreneurs, some want to be, go into the business sector. Oh my goodness, you're taking this opportunity away from them. I'd like the community to stand with me if they think these skills are important, if it's important that you, that you be able to think for yourself, that these students need to be able to manage their time, manage to collaborate with others, to manage their money, to do credit, to be able to have a healthy place to live, to be self-confident, to learn from failure, to be leaders, to be able to take care of their future children and their parents someday, to be able to live on their own. I ask you to look at your constituents and look at what they think is important and reconsider your vote. They will not learn this in the core classes. The core classes have neither time nor energy nor the desire to teach life skills. And yes, we teach life skills as well as career and college readiness. Please reconsider your vote, I ask you. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kayden Kaser. I'm currently a student at Azusa Unified School District, Azusa High School. I am a senior. Today, I'm going to express my frustration here with the board today at the meaning of cutting programs. It doesn't take a genius to look around the room to see how many wonderful fellow students of mine, along with teachers, who hold these wonderful signs up here that talks about the cutting of fashion and trying to save it. And I implore, or more or less ask the question to the board, does this not change any sort of positions that you have? Does this not show that an overwhelming arc of voices are collectively coming together to tell you that there is something wrong with this decision? You see, I believe the true meaning of the district when they make decisions is let us open a pathway to gaining careers in one way, but let's siphon off another, because if it doesn't work, we don't fix it, we chop it. And I'd like to say that I would hope that's not the sentiment that the district is trying to push here today. Even though I am not in these fashion clubs, I am not in these classrooms, I still feel as a student of this school, it is my urgent duty to express upon those students who feel that they can't speak for themselves, to speak upon them, because as I always say, and I live to my own principles, I like to utilize a tool, and the tool I like to think of and refer to is my voice, and I want to utilize that today, just like many others. And for those behind me who are passionately here today, along with me, to show their support for these programs, I cannot thank you enough as well for coming. This is very important that we hammer in the importance of this, because as I have always said, and I will continue to say, the district has achieved one thing in doing this, it has now created a gap, a gap between recognizing potential abilities to create a career with this class and the gap to actually succeed with that potential. That has created some fears for me. It has created three fears. One is the fear of success for the lower generations that are behind me. Even though I am leaving the school, my motto that I always said when I came to Azusa was, even though it has given me little, I did not want to leave it with a lot less. And that is something I would hope the district takes in mind, but I guess not. And my other fear is that this sets a very dangerous course for some people who want to recognize their potentials or just getting there to do so, and now are being pushed back. And the last and most dangerous fear is it sets a precedent. It sets a precedent for, if it ain't STEM, then we condemn. That's the truth. And I, I hope, I hope I am wrong in saying that. I hope that those who see today, that heed the words that I say, you reap what you sow when you make these decisions. Thank you very much.
Jorge V. Rosales, followed by Caesar Camacho.
My name is Jorge Rosales, and I don't know if I can follow that, but I will. He spoke very eloquently and from the heart. I'm here to remind the board of a priority triangle that was developed on June 9th, 2014. Took months and months and months, and a lot of dollars paid to a consultant to come up with the priorities of the school district with respect to measure K funds. My question to you tonight is, why is it fencing, kitchens, landscaping, marquees a higher priority than, if I read this correctly, physical education areas and fields? Why is it that it took faculty and students to come to several board meetings and plead with this board to consider fixing up the fields when millions of dollars were spent on fencing, which is a lesser priority, established by the board? Why? Why is that? Okay? I just, you know, I thought I would remind you, you established the priorities, okay? Not the community, but you. And PE areas and fields were much higher priority than marquees, than kitchens, than landscaping. Now, this, this board has asked staff to provide information on consultants when consultants come for board approval. Board member Shilunin Cruz Gonzalez has requested that. How was the selection made, et cetera, et cetera? Well, I didn't see any of that in tonight's agenda. Consultant Letizia Rodriguez, how was she selected? What will she be addressing her students, grades seven and tenth on? It doesn't say anything. What will she be addressing? Okay? And ratification on one item, 9.2, I believe. Why after the fact? Can the board deny the ratification? Then what? What does that entail? What does that accomplish? You know? It's after the fact. Why? That's, that's a good question for someone to answer. If anybody wants this, I can leave it up here.
This is a video that my former students made to show you, since you can't always get into my classroom to see what the kids do, so this is what goes on in our classroom.
I'm the president of our Hero Fashion Club. I will be attending FIDM with an $11,000 scholarship, all because of this program. Our fashion program offers students the opportunity to work hands-on and learn the basics of modifying, maintaining, and repairing clothing and other garments. Students can also make their own clothing using patterns or design their own unique clothing line. They have the opportunity to apply their new skills by using industrial equipment that they would not get to use anywhere else. There's forms, over twenty sewing machines, several sergers, and world-class embroidery machines, which we also use to produce various products for other groups at the school, such as patches and aesthetic logos as seen here. The interior design class encourages students to apply mathematics in a real-world application by designing and constructing their own 3D-dimensional living space, taking into consideration proportion, scale, drafting, and surface area. They also learn to work with different materials, apply color theory, and work with local businesses like the new Home to Suites Hotel, to help design better environments for their customers. My three years in the fashion design program have been an amazing and an important part of my career choice, and it should be available to all students. I have learned to create, innovate, and collaborate with others, as well as making my own clothing line. But don't just take my word for it.
My name is Sharon Hunt. I'm a life skills teacher at Azusa High School. I teach students that have significant intellectual disabilities, and my students attend Angel Cleney's interior design and fashion design classes, and they love it, and we hope that our students will continue to have the opportunity to attend these classes in the future.
Hi, my name is Robert Beltran, and I'm a football coach at Azusa High School. One of the ways that home economics helps us is they repair our jerseys when we carry them at games or practices. This program is no longer, we are not sure what we're gonna do, we're gonna have to outsource to get it repaired, and it's gonna cost us some money.
My name is Jorge Kisa. I'm an alumni from Azusa High School, and I'm in Cleney's fashion class. This program gave me the insight on how creativity impacts the development of technological and industrial design and productivity, and it's one of the reasons why I believe I'm succeeding in my career path towards industrial design.
It's not just a classroom, and it's not just home ec. This program gives students the skills that they can apply in the classroom, but most importantly, in their daily lives. Design is used everywhere around us, from the clothes we wear to the car we drive. Our motto at Azusa High School is every student, college and career, ready. So then why are you taking away our career pathway?
Next up, we have Gloria Camacho.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. My name is Gloria Esparza Camacho. I am a mother, PTA board member, veteran, sergeant in the United States Army, and I am here to address an important issue that we, as a community, are facing. I am referring to the board's decision to eliminate the fashion, interior design, and culinary arts classes in our district. This decision limits opportunities that our students deserve. It also jeopardizes marketable skills that employers seek. These classes give our children practical, no, essential, life skills such as critical thinking, problem-solving, and the ability to collaborate. As an alumni of Azusa High School's fashion design program and recipient of the Home Economics Scholarship to attend the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising, also known as FITM, I know the benefits that these programs offer. I have firsthand experience that these classes are taught from a business perspective that cultivates a multitude of career paths, as you can see from me. As an alumni, excuse me, as I pursue my own education in visual communications design, the fashion classes continue to serve as my foundation that I build upon and utilize to inform my work today. to inform my work today. More than anything, these classes are where I found my creative voice, after being a student in Azusa schools from grades K through 12. By now, we've all heard of STEM, but why stop there? STEAM, that's science, technology, engineering, art, and math. In real, in the real world, for which we are preparing our students, all of these subjects are taken into account. Ms. Clenny realizes this, and she has the patience to apply all of these subjects, because in any sort of project or collaborative endeavor, you will be utilizing every single one of those. As a parent and active volunteer in the community, I'd like to stay enrolled in Azusa schools because it's my home, it's our home. However, as our daughter seeks to further her education, we find it increasingly difficult to stay in a district that continues to eliminate career pathways in the arts. This is why the community urges you to reverse your decision to close the fashion, interior design, and culinary arts programs and save the few home economic courses that we have left. Thank you for your time.
George Urquiza. Followed by Yasmin Garcia.
Hi, good evening. I am George Orquiza. I'm an alumni from Azusa High School. A few weeks ago, the board decided to dismantle the fashion interior, home economics program. I understand of the importance of engineering and science, but I also understand that importance, the importance of creativity as fashion, interior, and home economics establishes creativity, that creativity that we need and is also is in demand in the, in this competitive globalization. As an alumni from this program, it has given, it has given me an approach on how creativity has impacted technology and industrial productivity and design. It's one of the reasons why I actually majored into industrial design myself. These students are in the forefront of this new wave of creativity. They're the new designers and entrepreneurs and are a part of a force that will be leading engineering, engineering and technology in the future. The students of the fashion program showcased a fashion show that has grown for the, for the last few years and has brought revenue to the program and a great experience for Azusa High School students. Unfortunately, of my time being there, I never seen one of you attend that, that event. A jewel of Azusa High School, progress and pride. The students apply mathematics and utilize, utilize industrial heavy machinery, as you saw in the video, to learn and enhance the skills to take college, to make them ready for college and career ready. This program is giving a future to these students and shouldn't, and shouldn't be dismantled. So I do ask the board to please review your, your decision of these programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Yasmin Garcia, followed by Jerry Jimenez.
This will be short, but not sweet. Aren't I supposed to be having the best years of my life? Being able to express myself and find out what I like? Not everyone is an IB student. Not everyone is an engineer. We all take part in this world differently. And lately, different is not what the board wants and not what the industry wants, but it's what they need. No matter how hard they try to take away our platforms, we stand our ground and kick and scream until they hear us. We need future generations to be able to create and express. If the board won't listen, then I urge to parents and fellow students to do so. I had dug a path for my career and where I was going. You've just disintegrated my dreams and many others due to a budget cut. You want to talk about having enrollers and completers? You've just lost one. I stayed at Azusa High specifically for my, for my fashion class. I regret to inform you that I cannot guarantee my enrollment at this high school next year. Is my career and future worth being cut and thrown away okay because they're filling their pockets? Fashion has always been used as means of self-expression. Without creativity, you will limit our students and will have the ability to think outside the box and, most importantly, express themselves. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here asking ASU school boards to accept and honor the recommendations made by the 7-11 committee. The 7-11 committee has recommended two. One, not to close any elementary schools. Two, to establish a new 7-11 committee to look at closing the middle school and moving those seventh and eighth graders to a US, a USD junior high school. Three, move the sixth graders back to elementary schools. Four, move Sierra High and adult ed to a junior high school. Five, sell the property that holds Sierra High School and adult ed as a surplus land. That's it. Thank you.
Sandra Perkovic.
Board members, look at the faces of your community. What do you see? No, really, what do you see? Could it be a number? A bag of dollars? I see hard-working people with children and families. I see hard-working students who value their futures and careers. I see teachers who rush to the aid of their students and spend countless unpaid hours after work just to make sure they succeed. Board members, what do you see when you look in a mirror? No, really, what do you see? Could it be a hero, a savior? Maybe there's some truth in that. Maybe there's no real way we can see what you actually do when you go to work. I mean, it's not like you've been very transparent. What we see is the results of your so-called hard work, cut classes and cut teachers. What we see is a series of bad mistakes made by what could be good people. When I come up here and force myself to look up at you, I see what could be a good person, hurting the people that I have gone to school with, that I have worked with, and that I live with. No matter how many awards you think you deserve or how much money you add to your salary for a job well done, I and everyone else who's here to support this cause see incompetence and misery. This is a reputation you have earned. I want to explore the lack of transparency in your district further. Last Thursday, my teacher received a notice from our principal that her class would no longer be available for registration. We are unable to see how many students actually want these classes. Dr. Ruben Gabo was my principal for two years at Azusa High School. While he was there, we all felt enamored by the way he spoke, the way he acted, and the positive things we were seeing around school. All the while, he was plotting to eliminate the home ec classes, even going so far as to cut interior design from the schedule. Now, now he's saying that there's absolutely no way that our teacher will be rehired despite English credentials she can use and 27 years of experience at Azusa. Is this fair? Should he be sitting where he is right now? And while we're on the subject, I'd also like to focus on Superintendent Linda Kaminsky. In 2016, she received a pay raise. In 2017, she was named by the Los Angeles County Office of Education as Superintendent of the Year. Does she deserve this, when both of these years we have had to come here and beg, beg to keep our classes? I've done a lot of talking, a lot of yelling, and a lot of foaming at the mouth. I did that last time, assuming that you didn't need to talk logic, but I'm here again because that didn't work. That's okay, let's talk logic. You're cutting these electives because supposedly we don't have enough money in the district. Supposedly, there aren't enough children signing up to go to Azusa or Gladstone, which results in less money, which is why we're cutting electives. I understand that it's hard to attract students. Public education has to complete with private and charter schools just to survive. Every school is breaking their backs trying to carry the weight of this. We're all trying to grab at kids like it's a Black Friday sale. But how is getting rid of the electives? How is getting rid of the electives they want going to help? Would you really want to go to a school that's so removed from art? Would you want to go to a school that only has STEM classes? How do you expect students to graduate? Where will we be getting our fine arts credit? Are you going to pack us like sardines in a single room with one teacher just so we might have the chance to graduate? You and I both know that's inhumane. You and I both know that this whole thing is inhumane. I can't speak on behalf of Gladstone's teachers, but I can speak on behalf of Ms. Clenny. Last week, I came to her with a dumb idea, a dumb dream, to make some embroidered pillow. I had never embroidered anything before, and I didn't know how to use the machines. I left school that day thinking that I wouldn't get my chance. The next day, she called me in and showed me that she had already programmed something for me, that she had taken the time out of her day just to support this crazy idea I have. She was patient and considerate and listened to my concerns, my thoughts, and my opinions. How about another instance, when we bumped into each other at Joanne's and she helped me find everything I need? How about every single day she will come to help me, no matter how stupid my questions are? How she rushed to help me over the tiniest malfunction with a glue gun, just to see if I was okay? She entertains my jokes, she gives me honest criticism and helps me to grow. If you were half as kind, thoughtful, and dedicated as her, then we wouldn't be here. I'm done ripping into you. I'm done speaking meaninglessly to a brick wall. I'm done crying about something I can't change. But I'm never going to be finished fighting for why and we, and everyone knows is right. What I have here is 1,453 signatures accumulated from this year and last year pleading one final time to make the right choice. If STEM is the only way you're gonna go, which I guess it is, you go ahead and run your whole district to the ground by not efforting anything for the rest of us. If you do what we're all hoping you won't do, then I want you to look at your community and know that we're looking right back at you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Marisela Cueva, followed by Destiny Reese. Marisela Cueva.
Hello, my name is Destiny Reese. I'm a senior at Azusa High School. And this is my, like I said, this is my final year. I was accepted to the FIDM Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising in Los Angeles, California. With an $11,000 scholarship because of this program, which I don't understand why you guys are cutting this. I mean, it, it really makes no sense. You guys are coming up with excuses that aren't sticking together. I mean, it's, it's just a lot of confusion and chaos I don't understand. And I have these two cousins who are in the third grade. The one wants to be, wanted to be an oceanologist, and the other one just wasn't sure. I've loved fashion since the second grade, and I've always wanted to pursue it. I've never changed it from that point on. And I realized that they started to adapt after what I liked to do. Recently, I was told by the two of them, who are twins, Lindsay and Leslie Porter, I want to be a fashion designer just like you. I told them, well, guess what? My school has a fashion program. Are they gonna have it next year? No, because you guys have decided to cut it. So now I have to tell them, well, I guess you have to go somewhere else. I mean, where, where are they gonna go? I mean, they want to pursue this career, but how? To be honest, I, I know you said that these kids have STEM, but what about all the other students? I'm not looking down on being an engineer or a scientist, but that's not me. I mean, each person has an individual ID and has an individual passion. My passion is fashion, and that's all I'm gonna accept. Today, we wear red to show that we are bleeding. You guys are literally just crushing our dreams. The day that our teacher, Ms. Clenny, had found out that she got her pink slip, we all gathered around and we prayed, asking God, Lord, at least, please, Lord, just give us all peace. Let us stick together. If this program is cut, we're still gonna try as hard as we can to bring it back, if that's what we need to do. Mr. Paul, I want to thank you for being on our side, for helping us, for trying to let your other colleagues consider at least that arts and fine arts is all that we, we need this program. I mean, where is she gonna go after this? Have you guys considered that? Or do you guys care about the money? I mean, I, I really don't know anymore. You guys just do not, do you guys care about the students or not? Great for the STEM and all that, what about the others? Do you not care about each individual student or just about a group of students for, let's say, IB? Is that all you care about? Or do you care about all these other students who are sitting here waiting to speak to you, trying to get you to at least consider our idea? I'm, I'm, I'm done just begging. Do you want us to get on our knees and pull at your ties, at your skirts or whatever, and at least make you consider to keep fashion, to keep business? Gerald CC, these programs are helping us for business, to manage money, I'm pretty sure you guys understand that. Gerald CC, to help serve others, I'm pretty sure you guys got that too. And fashion, the way you dress. As you can see, what I'm wearing today, jean boots, jean overalls, and all of that. You guys really need to consider, us students, just because I'm a senior and I'm leaving next year means nothing. My plan was to come back when I'm famous as ever, to give money back to this program and these students because we need it. And also, I wanted to say something as well, which she just brought up in the back. So can you please share this?
Just very quickly, I work at City of Hope. I've been there over 10 years, and I support a doctor who is, was recently endowed a chair, a $2 million chair, by George Si, who is the CEO of Fairmont Designs, which is a furniture design program. So while she is the recipient of the STEM, he bestowed upon her finances that she did not have as a designer. So they do go together. She now has a title that she was given by a man who would have taken a fashion class that you might be taking away. Thank you for allowing it to be here for my daughter. It did, I sat in her FIDM admissions meeting, and that $11,000 was strictly because she was the FIDM president, because she was senior, completely just totally related just to this program. And I'm sad to be able to have to go to church tonight and tell Lindsay and Leslie that they're not possibly gonna be able to come to Azusa for fashion, and that's gonna break those two little girls' hearts. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Marisela Cueva.
Good evening, board members and students here. I applaud you for your passion. Today, I'm talk, I'm here to talk about the Azusa Leaders for Learning Education Foundation. A group of parents, several years ago, or I probably want to say more than 10 years ago, had the vision or idea that Azusa Unified School District needed an education foundation because there are so many programs and opportunities, and there's so, there's so much need. And so, the group of parents and community leaders created the Azusa Leaders for Learning Education Foundation. We started this, and we're happy to announce that we are going to be providing three $1,000 scholarships this year. So I encourage all the students, seniors, to please apply. We will be giving a scholarship to Azusa High School, to Gladstone High School, and also to Sierra. And you can get more information about the scholarship program at your, at the Career Center. So we encourage all the students to participate. Just to give you an overview of the Azusa Education Foundation is that our mission is that we want to create partnerships, and we want to create educational excellence, innovation, enrichment, scholarships, and hands-on learning experiences in the arts, sciences, technology, and social development. So we are gonna be planning more opportunities for people to get involved. We encourage parents to also support the Azusa Leaders for Learning Foundation. I think that as a community and together, we can do a lot to help the school district. There's so much more potential for the school district as well, and I think that's together as a community, as a family, we can see and we can do a lot here for the school district. Thank you very much, and I encourage you, all the students, to please apply for the scholarship. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no more cards tonight. Thank you, everyone who spoke this evening. We are now moving on to 7.0, Report Action of Close Session Matters. We are on 7.1, Student Matter, student number 17-1801-48. What are the wishes of the board?
I can motion to approve.
First by Paul LaCaution.
Second.
Second by Olanda Rodriguez Peña. Please place your votes.
I just voted on the student matter.
Motion passes 5-0. We are now moving on to 8.0, General Functions. 8.1. 8.1, Approve Resolution 17-18 6-0, declaring the week of April 9th through the 13th, 2018, as Adult Education Week. What are the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
First by Jerry Bibles Vogel.
A second.
Second by Paul McCaughan. Do we have any discussion? Comments? What is the student preferential vote? Approve. Thank you, sir. Please place your votes. And motion passes 5-0. With that, congratulations, and thank you to our adult education program for everything that they do on behalf of our community. And we are now moving on to 8.2. This is a capital facilities program update, and we do have a presentation tonight.
This is just a brief update on some of the projects that we are undertaking, with some photos to show progress. So, we'd started a number of years ago, looking at some schools that did need some fencing, and we are, we started with the perimeter fencing around the fields and have progressed to finishing off those programs with some fencing at Murray and Gladstone, Gladstone High School. This is a picture of Murray. You can see that obviously some work is going on right now. Today, I actually learned that they found an old sump pump buried underground, so they'll be working on adjusting their plans for that, to take care of that. This is a brief layout of what it is. You can see the entrance is this kind of round spot up here, with some increasing security because of the fencing that goes across the entrance of the school to allow greater control over access. This is a rendering of what it will look like. The shapes along the wall there is the fence around the kindergarten area, and one of the safety additions that we're putting there is making sure that that is not see-through, so that kids can play and have protection from just casual observation. And then you can see the entryway highlighted there to help people understand where the school is, and as well as some addition of benches and things, just to enhance the feeling of ease and welcome. This is Gladstone High School, the entrance as it currently is. One of the issues that arose there is that the entrance is not ADA compliant. You can see the steps on that particular side that are visible. On the other side, there is an ADA ramp, but it is too steep, and so has to be redone. That was one of the reasons that we needed to address that issue. And this is a rendering showing the changes with steps on one side and then a longer ramp over on the, what would be on the left-hand side there. The school asked for the G in the front of their school to highlight their logo, their famous G logo. And then during some, during spring, they're finalizing some of the design and submission of our projects to DSA, Division of State Architect. There have been needs for kitchen upgrades to meet Health and Safety Code at Slauson. Azusa High School has a drainage problem from the buildings in the middle of the school grounds down through the fields. It needs to be done. And then we'll be proceeding with the normal routines of modernization at Dalton. They had their roofing done. The next step is Underground Utilities. Lee will start with the roofing and HVAC, fire alarm work, and then some additional fencing as needed. This illustrates the kitchen at Slauson Middle School. The two brown areas are, one is a walk-in freezer, and one is a walk-in refrigerator, which are needed to maintain the safety of the foods. And then the blue areas are some updates to the serving lines. That's Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the project, and those phases are expected to be completed this summer. And here's a rendering of what some of that will look like. At the top, the pictures show the current status of the kitchen, and the bottom shows some of the serving line adaptations, some walls that have been removed to make the kitchen able to serve students more rapidly. This picture shows the drainage situation at Azusa High School. The purple lines up there are where pipes need to be redone and enlarged for appropriate drainage. If you recall, the summer before last, or rather, the winter before last, we had quite a bit of rain, and the water tended to flow down just through the parking lot, through the staff parking lot, and run into the water along Cerritos Avenue, creating quite a bit of congestion with the water, one flowing from two different areas. There is a city, a storm drain down at the very bottom, a baseline in Cerritos, and that, our drainage system was never connected to that, and so that is what will need to be done there. And then, starting in summer and continuing on in the next year, one of the schools that had not been modernized, Lee, will get their roofing, their HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and the fire alarm done, the field fencing as needed, and beginning work at, looking at the track and field at the high schools. And this is just a layout of Azusa High School, showing you currently where the buildings are in brown and the fields in green. We are starting the work of, working with the designers to look at the placement of the fields, to make sure that all the different, you know, baseball, softball, soccer, football are all placed at the, you know, sighted as best as possible for maximum utility. And this is the same kind of thing at Gladstone High School. Yesterday, I had a chance to sit in on the Gladstone High School meeting, where they were looking at the placement of the field and track for the football soccer field. And there was also a similar meeting yesterday for Azusa High. They're gonna continue the work and come up with a few more designs to see which one is, makes the most sense, and what the coaches are saying will work best for their programs. One other issue that has come up from time to time is the cost for Measure K. And basically, there are two kinds. One are the hard costs, or the construction costs, which run about 60% to 70% of the total cost. And then there are the soft costs, which are all the inspections, the engineering, the architect, the owner representation consultants, a variety of legal aspects to having a construction project. And the Los Angeles County Office of Education estimates that those are about 30% to 40%. Another statewide organization that deals with school construction estimates 35% to 40%. And ours currently are running at about 25%, which is good. We're a little bit under what is considered the industry standard, and so that's positive.
So, could you clarify? So, those, everything on top are just estimates, and the bottom one is only directly related to our district? The last bullet?
The last one is where we are right now.
So the top, where it says hard cost, construction cost, 60% to 70%? That is, that does not refer to our district? Can you clarify that for me, please?
That's, well, what that is, is if you think of 100% of costs, which are both the hard costs and the soft costs, the general industry estimates are that roughly 30% to 40% are the soft costs, which means 60% to 70%. So that's the estimate.
So, but yes, so I understand that. So what I'm asking is, will you please clarify for me that that is not our current costs, right? That is, those are what are out there industry?
That's correct. That is correct. And currently, our soft costs are running at about 25%, meaning that 3/4 or 75% of the funds that are being expended are just being spent directly on the construction costs.
Okay. I mean, I'll just say that this does not make that clear, right? I think, I would look at that and think, "Oh, my God, 60% of our costs are hard costs," which is very low. So I just would appreciate if we made it clearer what we're currently doing right now.
Thank you for the question. Any other questions?
So, can you explain to me as to both high schools, the fields, the light green as a dark green? So what is the project?
The dark green are the tennis courts, and the light green are the fields, the grass fields, basically.
So, this is...
And so, the project that we're looking at right now is there, for example, at, this is Gladstone, looking at putting in a, it'd actually be a combination football, soccer field, and then they're looking at track around it.
And Dr. Kaminski, can you please explain why we are doing the fencing at this time?
And the fencing is part of the, initially started because of security concerns at a couple schools. And so it's continuing that, the need to really address those security issues. And it has been actually very successful. The schools that were experiencing a greater number of break-ins, the fencing is helping us.
And also the fields, why we're doing the high school field?
Well, and that is, you know, there are, one of the things, the challenges that we face as a district is that years ago, before we had Measure K, it was estimated that we had about $144 million worth of projects that would need to be done at some point. Our bond, however, was 92 million, because that, by law, there's a limit to how much money you can, you can raise at a given time, depending on the average assessed valuation of homes. So we know that we don't have enough money to do everything right away. But in trying to prioritize what the needs are, some of them are certainly, the first need, or first priority of the board was to finish schools that were not finished, and to deal with other critical needs as the, as the school district becomes aware of them. So, for example, one of the first projects was a fire alarm at Sierra High School. And as we've continued looking at the high schools, they were partially modernized, not completely. And the current bond doesn't have enough money to do all of the modernization, but based on input from, from students and from staff about priorities, so far, we have put in air conditioning at the gyms at the two schools, and are now looking at the fields, using the lens of which aspects of the plant will affect the most students, the most staff. And so, the students and staff use the gym, students and staff use the fields more so than maybe some other, you know, administration office.
Yeah, and also why we did not stick to the pyramid? You know, why it changed and fluctuated the way it is at the STEM, why is it doing that?
Well, and I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind, everything on the pyramid has, has an importance, and some of it can be addressed at different times. For example, clearly, fire alarms are important, but they have to be addressed immediately, even though we know that we still have to do the roofing or something else.
So the projects will not be necessarily the way the pyramid is set up?
Right, right. It depends on really kind of what rises to the level of critical need at that time.
Like the kitchens also.
Right. And that's, you know, the district, the district has used the lens of prioritizing health and safety, and impact on students and staff, and finishing as much of the, from the prior bond that we, that we can. So we're on track. We're, we're moving ahead, finishing those prior projects. The prior schools that weren't modernized were the three elementary schools, Lee, Paramount, and Dalton. And they're moving forward, you know, the regular pace, what we're trying to do, some project every year for them. And the center in Slauson, as well as the partially modernized schools, the two comprehensive high schools. Thank you.
So, I just wanted to clarify, so the proposal essentially considers the field itself, the fields, both high schools. So are we looking at 811,000, some square feet of area that we're gonna address? Is that what it is, or?
The eight, for example, this one, the 811,000?
Yes.
No, we don't have enough money to do the whole part of it. We're looking right now at the football area up there at the top.
Okay, so...
So, for example, if we wanted to do, in some subsequent time period, if we are able to, depending on what other projects we need to address, or which ones we can change in terms of priority, we may have some funds to deal with some of the others, or it may have to wait for a subsequent bond.
So, so we're gonna only look at the area that's, that's the playing field for football? Is that what you're saying?
Right now, that's what we're looking at, yeah. And that already, as, as people have expressed interest in not a six-track lane, but an eight or even a nine-track lane to meet some CIF options, their price continues to vary a little bit. So they're looking at how to cite it, how to keep the price within as much, you know, as close to what we would like to see as possible, or what we can afford, but also meet the, meet the needs and interests of the school.
I want to point out the fact that it isn't just football. It's football, soccer, track, band, our... Oh. Microphone. Is it on now? Okay. I'd like to point out, basically, that it was football, track, soccer, band, because our band also practices on those fields, and for gym, PE. So all of the students that that would affect, I mean, that right there is the largest amount, from what I've seen. You know, I mean, it's gonna be just across the board, among other things.
So, from a design standpoint, then, everything's staying where it is?
Well, actually, we're, the, the school is still looking at that, and yesterday, when we met, we were presented with three different designs. One location, for example, where the field, the football field is right now, staying. Another one where it was turned along the backside, coming down north-south. And the coach was interested in a fourth version, so we've asked the design team to go back and, and give us some information about that, in terms of if his design is feasible, you know, if it can fit everything. And what they're trying to do is make sure, for example, Gladstone High School, they'd like to end up with one dedicated track field slash soccer field, two softball fields, two baseball fields, and another softball practice field. And they're trying to juggle and work where that makes sense, where it fits. And part of the issue is there's an elevation change from where the football field is currently to what is up there on, are some of the diamonds. And so, having, having to deal with that elevation change and figure out really the best placement for things long-term. They're also looking at long-term, right now, we don't have a budget for stands, but if we ever got stands, making sure that we've left enough room for that, so that we could bring them in at some later point.
So, just can you clarify for me, then? Because I, I mean, I assume that this was, this is the plan going forward. So you're saying that's not, that this is the plan going forward, these maps that you're showing us, but you're telling me, no, that's not the case?
No, these are samples, and they're still, they haven't set on, they're looking at a couple different options, and getting feedback and input on that, and they have not yet determined. This is what currently exists.
Okay, so how are you getting feedback?
Feedback is right now, starting with the coach of the, of the...
A single coach?
I'm sorry, the athletic director. The athletic director and the school principal saw the first iteration of designs, and more designs were requested. And they will be, the athletic director will be working with the staff on that primarily, in terms of making sure that the instructional needs of the program and the, the playing needs, the league needs, league needs are met. What we've done in every subsequent other, other development is involve students and staff at some point, too.
So we'll be doing that? What's the timeline on this?
I don't know when the next design is coming back, but I'll let you know when I find out.
So you'll, okay.
So my recommendation, at the next board meeting, if not the next, the following board meeting, is to have this broken down in detail. And I'd like to see our architect here with some more, with some more information that is a little more tangible for us. I think this is, no, we're, we're starting off, and these are good, they're good questions, but I'd like to see where we're at in terms of, of design, and what their thinking is, and the input that we're getting, and it be a little more clearer.
Can I just clarify? Are you thinking fields in particular, or everything that they've...
No, not, not everything. We're just specifically on fields.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, in terms, in reference to, to the kitchens, so I think it was last year, we went on a tour of all the kitchens in the, in the district, and we did see the need. Now, in terms of Slauson, can you explain to, to the community and the public, how many schools are serviced out of Slauson, and how many meals are being produced per day?
Well, I wish that Stella was here, she could really answer that question. We have, in this district, we have three central kitchens. We have one at Slauson, one at Azusa, and one at Gladstone High School, and they prepare the meals for their school, as well as a number of other surrounding schools. I don't have the list of which ones do, which, I can't answer that for you, or tell you exactly how many meals that we have, but we can get that information for you. But basically, those are the hub areas for the whole food program in, in the district. And they have the responsibility, in fact, is if you go and visit them, you can see areas lined up that say, you know, these are the meals that are gonna be delivered to Paramount, or to Lee, or to Dalton, or other, other schools. So the food gets prepared in one of these three kitchens. And of those three, Slauson and Azusa, had some issues that needed to be addressed to meet current health and safety codes. And so that is the reason behind these, these changes.
And we also saw a need for freezers, I know.
Right, yeah, yeah. And one of the, one of the... Right, yeah, yeah. And one of the, one of the, you know, I think we all, as, as people who live in homes, we take it for granted that your freezer is in your kitchen. But in school settings, sometimes your freezer has been outside, and you have to go out to do, and that, that's not really the best way to do it. You shouldn't be taking food from a cold storage area into the outdoors, and then back into your kitchen. They are supposed to be connected. But because we had some very old freezers that no longer functioned, we've had to make some changes, and this will allow us to then create the correct positioning of these, the freezer and the refrigerator within the confines of the, of the kitchen. Basically, we're gonna extend out the area, so that we can still have it as, as connected, and no need to go outside at all.
And we're renting these freezers currently?
We have been renting them for a number of years. This particular year, we were able to purchase some, purchase, I think, one for the same price as the rental, which is allowing us to, as we need to, move it to different sites.
So I do have one final question, and that's, it's not on this presentation, but, but in the, the FICMAT report, one of the, one of the pieces was about having a, a facilities master plan. And I know at the, two board meetings ago, I made a request about us pursuing that, and I, and so I just wanted an update on that, so where, are we in that process?
And that, that is something, that's one of the things that is on the to-do list for that. What was, what that plan refers to is really upkeep of the facilities that we have, as distinct from building new facilities or modernizing facilities. It's really, what is the timeline for replacing or monitoring things like air conditioners, or, you know, other aspects of the plan? How often do you paint? How often do you, you know, fix, maintain the, the status of the, of the equipment that you have? And if you'd like, we can ask Mr. Bamarito to talk a little bit about that.
So, I mean, I, I mean, I understand that that was referred to that, but I think part of it also calls for a facilities master plan. And I thought, so I made, I made a, a request that we consider going out for requests for proposals, or exploring what, what it would take to have a full, either a full master plan, or whether it's what you're talking about more, a plan for how do we align facilities, upgrades with ongoing maintenance. But I did ask for us to go and pursue, go figure out, like, how that would happen. And so I think maybe I'll turn to the, the other board members, and I, I mean, I felt like we had consensus on that, at that meeting. So did, did we?
Yes.
So I, what I'm, what I'm asking is.
Yes, and let me just clarify, too. I think the direction that I heard from the meeting was to start with the fields, and to, to start with the planning of the fields, and that's why we did that.
That, so that was, to meaning, when we had the audit, at the end of Mar, at the end of February, we, I made a request that we could, that we, where we do the research around what it, who, like, what kind of services are out there, consultant services, to be able to, to do a master plan for us, right? Because you can't do that internally. And so what I'm asking now, I'm making another request now, that, that at the next board meeting, and it's a month, 'cause we don't meet until April 17th, that you come back with at least options for us, in terms of where we can go forward with the facilities master plan, to, to comply with what's in the audit.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Yes, on, on the drainage upgrade, is it only just Azusa High School?
Yes.
Okay. So the glass, it doesn't have any issues with this?
Robert, do you have any questions?
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any other questions, comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kaminski. We are now moving on to 9.0, Consent Calendar 9.1. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the board to be routine, and will be enacted by the board in one motion, in the formal, in the format, following the last Consent Calendar Agenda item. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board staff or the public request specific items to be discussed. If discussion is requested by a board member, that item will be removed from the Consent Calendar, and will be considered separately. The superintendent and staff recommend approval of all Consent Calendar Agenda items. Do we have any items that wish to be pulled tonight? Seena, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
First by Paul Nacash.
I'll second.
We have a second by Shilin Cruz Gonzalez. Does the student preferential vote?
Approved.
Approved. Thank you, sir. Please place your votes. Motion passes 5-0. We are now moving on to 11.0, Business and Finance. We are on 11.1, Approve Agreement with Helios, Helios Ed. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
First by Jerry Bibles Vogel.
I'll second.
We have a second by Shilin Cruz Gonzalez. Do we have any questions, discussion regarding this item?
Yes, I have some, several questions regarding this program. Has this, what other district is using this program at this time?
Yes, nearby, we have Claremont Unified, I believe Downey, Burbank Unified, are the two closest districts that are currently using it.
So, so what would this actually be helpful to our district?
In, in many regards. On the human resources side, it's gonna really help with automation and efficiency, to really be able to pull data, for example, from our current HRS system, on a daily basis, to be able to have access to various reports. To have on the other side for employees, a platform to upload documents. It's gonna help us with position control, it's gonna help us with everything from coaches and credential authorizations. It's gonna really, from onboarding all the way through to retirement, to really automate that process, and create everything on an online, to reduce paper. It's gonna reduce the need for, for, for a lot of labor, in terms of employees will be able to upload documents, check on documents, you know, bring out reports. It communicates with labels, lists, and letters. So it'll cut down on people having to call in, hey, I have a question about this, or I wanna update this information. They'll be able to do it from an online platform.
So who would be using this? HR department, or?
It's beyond HR. It'll actually impact all departments. But I'll, I'll turn over the mic in just a minute to, to Mark. But from an HR perspective, it is extremely promising. Our team received, it, it does absence reporting, it's gonna, it, it has a variety of tools available for HR. And all of my team in HR got a presentation, and were just blown away on how it can make their jobs a little bit more efficient, and how we can better communicate to all of our employees and our stakeholders. On the business side, I'll let Mark talk about it, but we are super excited on the HR side.
Are you, are you planning on using this presentation attached, or that was just for?
We were planning on sharing just a few slides, if you'd like some information.
Yeah, that's fine, yes.
Kathy's trying to find it. But I'll go forward without it. It's, it's actually attached online, if you wanna pull it from there, or. So, it's a multitude of things, as Ramiro said. On the HR side, beyond what he said, it also allows us to do some of the things that are in the FICMAT audit, which is have an electronic place for our employees to sign, that document that they understand district board policy and procedures for their department, which will be much easier than a hand process that some of our departments do. And if there's ever any questions as to what employees have signed or not, it's all documented, it's much easier to track. It would allow us to do all of our mandated reports as well, in one place.
So, so what about the secretaries in the school site? Are they in the school site, too? Would it go to the school?
Literally, every employee would have a login. Again, also on the HR side, this would be a replacement for our substitute calling system. So our teachers would log in, or call in, and report that they were gonna be out. And then it would call out the sub for us, so it would replace one of our current products that we have right now, through Frontline. And it would integrate it into this one product. And then the, the great part about that is, then on my side, on the business side, when that teacher calls in for an absence, it's reported as an absence, and we have it documented as an absence. We have a system that will document where those dollars will need to be subtracted from. It creates that electric, electronic record that they were out for, for tracking time. Eventually, as of the shifts in my department, once HR gets up and running, we will also start using the online payroll services. So instead of our current process of paper time cards, we'll be shifting to an electronic time card. Employees and school sites will have access to enter in their time electronically. And instead of the system that we have now, where employees are literally hand-adding hours, we will have a system that can add it for them, and they'll, will eliminate that whole verification process that my team has to do, which will provide us more time to be more responsive to our employees, and provide better customer service.
Yeah, I've seen this after, I asked you the question regarding principals and staff and schools and administration.
In addition, as Mark mentioned, some of the mandated things, like sexual harassment, child abuse, a variety of, of resources will be available, so that employees can go online. For example, our coaches, a lot of the things that, through athletics, it, it's very time-consuming for my secretary to work with each individual coach, and there's various seasons, to do, whether it's concussion training, whether it's CPR, first aid, all those different documents that have to be collected, and brought into the office physically, and then kept in a file, because they're paper copy. This will all be on an online platform, where employees can then upload their documents, and cut back on all that work that Lupe has to do, tracking. So it, it's just really from start to finish, when employees, the job descriptions and postings, to when they start an onboard, all the way through retirement, it's gonna really automate that process. So we're, we're super excited about the potential. And there's a variety of other products that we can continue to explore. But it's, it's also a learning tool, so that employees have something available online.
So, so this is becoming the standard, you're saying? So all employees have, must participate?
So, for example, for mandated child abuse, sexual, yes, there are certain things that all, all employees have to do. They can access that from this platform, as an example. Then they can upload their documents when they've completed it, and there's, it'll be stored in one place. And so it, it's really nice. Then, on an administrative side, I think if we go to one of the slides that shows the administrative options, why don't we go to the reports one, the, the actual reports? It's a variety of reports that we can generate, that will serve the board, the superintendent, committees, for auditing purposes, you name it. We will be able to generate these types of report, a lot easier than what we currently are able to.
So this cost does not include evaluations, is that what I'm understanding?
So currently, we, we've chosen to not purchase the evaluation platform. We're in the process of designing, you know, our forms, and negotiating that at the table. At some point, we, we might explore that, we might purchase that service. And there are also other vendors that we would have to do our due diligence to look at and compare. But right now, we have not purchased the, the evaluation portion of it. That is correct.
So Mark, you mentioned that this is, part of it is a replacement, or this is a new cost? You said that there were some features of this that's gonna be merged into this one, correct? How much savings are we doing from that?
So, we're spending about eight grand, it's like 7,900 some change, on our current SubFinder system, so we would not be paying for that cost starting next year. And so that would be subtracted from this amount, as far as overall cost. And then, the cost of doing everything by hand has been immense, because everyone doing everything by hand creates more errors and more frustration, and ultimately, more extra hours and overtime.
So how would the employees be affected by this? I mean.
So things will, will be more streamlined, they'll have access to their information.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about, like, you know, do, so you're not gonna lose any employees, because you got this new system?
There's no, we are overwhelmed with work. And I don't imagine this in any way cutting into our classified, or, or accounting, or HR stuff. It, it's gonna allow us to provide better customer service, definitely. It's gonna allow us to look at things a little bit more deeply before we're moving forward. Currently, there's, there's months where we have so much payroll to get to, that we haven't updated our vacation balances for, like, our managers. And those get put on kind of the backlog of work to do, because we're so far behind with all the other assignments, and, and the turnover that I've been experiencing in the department. So there is more than enough for us to do, once this is implemented.
Okay, and I'm seeing that basically it's gonna be a more effective timekeeper for our employees, and establishing overtime hours, and which ones where they're going, instead of having it on paper, with them doing it themselves.
And I can, to answer Yolanda's question, I'll pass it back to Mark to answer yours. Our team really welcomed this. They're super excited, they saw the, you know, the general orientation and the, the presentation by the vendor, and they were blown away. And we, you know, we did check with the other vendors, of course, and no one came close to what Helios can offer. So as far as buy-in from our employee group and HR side, super excited about the potential.
And I also think that part of the FICMAT report was, you know, to keep track of the employees, and to keep track of, you know, paperwork, and if you have it in the system, and, and, you know, because sometimes the papers get lost, right? And, and I think it's easier if you have it in one, in one brain, I should say, pretty much.
So I have, I actually have a couple of questions, and I, you've referenced it slightly, Ramiro, but in terms of the selection process, because it is not, I would, I would prefer that it, that you put this into the rationale as we approve it, so that it's there. But could you please explain to me the process that you went through selecting this specific vendor?
So, we, we looked at vendors that are available, that offer the services that we want. One of the vendors that we currently work with, Frontline? Okay. Frontline came out and did a presentation and said, you know, hey, we currently do your absence reporting, and we explained, but this is what we want, you know? And they, they did their best, but there were certain areas that they just couldn't come close. Another vendor, a third vendor, is Power School, okay? There are certain elements that Power School does extremely well, that were very attractive to us, but then there are certain things that they do not. So overall, and then really, there isn't anyone else on the market that offers all of this on one platform. So then the shift went to, to Helios, and we checked with Frontline, and they, they made multiple attempts to come out. They lowered their prices, they did all kinds of things, and said, we're gonna develop these things at some point, but they're, but they're not there, and they're not even close. So then the conversation shifted to Helios, and Mark did an excellent job of saying, okay, we're interested in your, in your company, but you need to work with us on, on the things that we need. How are we gonna roll this out? What is the training gonna look like? What is the technical support? And then, of course, the cost. And Mark did a fabulous job of bringing the cost down to a point that I never thought we would get it down to. So we went through that selection process. There was no one else out there that came even close to offer the services we need, or the price.
But at any time, did you go to any of the school districts that have it, to see how the system works?
So I, I meet on a monthly basis with roughly 30 to 40 school districts, on the HR side. And I spoke to the folks who are using it, from Claremont, from Burbank, and there's one other district, I just can't remember the name right now. And they are all extremely impressed with the, the product itself, but also with the service. And they assured our team that, one, we're gonna roll it out slowly, and now's the time to really roll it out, in preparation for next year. The last thing we wanna do is try to start this at the beginning of the year, a new system and what have you. So we're gonna focus heavily on what is this gonna look like, and providing the, the training that our team needs, to make sure that this is successful, and it's the right product.
So can you clarify something for me, in terms of the replacing different services? Right, I mean, I, I thought we had, I thought we had adopted some financials, product that also included some of the HR pieces. But this preceded both of you.
Are you talking about Smarty Tools?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know this preceded both of you.
Right, it did, and I'm not sure if you want, yeah.
Go ahead. A lot of lessons learned from Smarty Tools, because I was the one to take it out. But Smarty Tools was only implemented for the finance side. We never were able to implement the HR side. And the struggle with the HR side was our contracts with our unions were not supported through their software. So the calculations that would be necessary to report leaves of absence, and work comp rules, and, and extended leaves were not possible in the product. And one of the, the issues with that contract was, there was no escape clause for us. And so, you know, we purchased that product as is. In this one, I have included rules that, after we start implementing, we can get out within 60 days at no cost, other than whatever dollars for them to send somebody out to help support. So all these would be waived, and then.
Wait, can you clarify, so you're saying within the first 60 days, or with 60 days' notice?
No, within the first 60 days. And then after that, it's year to year. And then after that, it's year to year. So we can get out at the end of this year, which would be probably in what, 100 and some days? So we would have another chance to escape every single year from this if it was not working for us.
So school year, not school year necessarily, year?
No, school year, fiscal year. So every fiscal year, we could leave this product and go to something that maybe comes out in the market that we're not aware of or is not invented yet. Or in five years, when Laco rolls out their program, if we wanted to eliminate some of the products here that are included in their, in their system that we don't have for another five years or four and a half years now, we could eliminate those and renegotiate that contract at that point, which we may want to do. But I wanted to make sure we had all those options available if per se, Laco says in two years, we're going to roll it out faster than scheduled. So I wanted to make sure we had a very open-ended contract with them so that way we could modify it if we needed to.
So in terms of, I know you referenced it, so what is the timeline for adoption?
For implementation, as soon as you guys agree to this tomorrow, if you agree to it, then tomorrow, we will start working with Helios on a scheduling. It'll roll out first to our HR team and they will start implementing their side of the product, get that set up. Once it's established while working and the... It talked too long. Okay, there we go. Once those rules have been established, then we'll start...
So what's your estimate on that piece?
We're hoping that they should be ready to be rolled out by the beginning of the school year next year. So in August, they'll be ready to go.
So you're going to work with HR staff for between now and August and you would roll it out to in August?
Correct. So in August to everyone, including teachers, classified, as they upload their documents, we would have everyone sign their new documents, reviewing board policies. In August, through the system, we would have our child abuse reporting signed off in this system. So all those pieces, our coaches would be monitored through here, our credentials, which we're going to be held accountable for next year, would be done through this system. So all those pieces would be for next school year.
So does that mean by August, we'll have control position in place or earlier?
We'll have then...
Position control, I'm sorry.
Have that set up and ready to go. And that's our plan for August, we'll be able to roll that out. There it goes. So yes, we'll have position control monitored through the system. The only aspect that'll be left would be the finance side and what we do to implement the budget strings to make sure that those get entered into HRS. So...
So when you say finance, are we still using Smarty Tools and then that would feed into that or what are we going to be doing on that?
No, so right now, we have an internal system that was created by our programmers. And so it would kind of replicate what we're doing through that program, which is a manual process of moving those positions in HRS once that approval process is approved.
So it's a one-time manual process or ongoing?
It's an ongoing. So it's an approval process where you set up a set of approvers and as they're approved, if it was a Title I, right now, it would go through INNA and then it would go to HR and business. And ultimately, we check that you guys have approved it at a board meeting and then that's when it gets manually approved as far as a change. Once we implement the whole product, it'll be more automated and we'll be able to roll those changes over into HRS easier.
All right. And then in terms of training the staff beyond HR, when would that happen?
So beyond HR is going to be in the beginning of the school year as we roll out the signatures and the trainings for child abuse reporting. And so that's when everyone will get the first step. And we'll have to roll out a training for substitutes reporting so they know the new number to call, they'll have a login and a review of what they would have to do to sign in and do it online if they chose.
Okay, I just want to make a couple of requests and that is, you said that you're going to have a more firm scheduling or firm schedule once you work with the vendor tomorrow? So would you please share that with us? It can be written, it doesn't have to be oral. And then I'd like to request an update, probably like in May or June. It can be written again too, just in terms of where we are in implementing, okay?
So I just have one last question. So who is doing all this training? Who's going from school to school or who's, how does this work?
So in the agreement, we have training hours that's approved through the vendor. And so we can call, we can do a trainer, trainer models, but of course, we need to meet these folks and see how skilled they are at training, whether we decide to do that model or have them go out directly to sites to do the training with us. So we have hours included in this product. Most likely, we'll do a trainer of trainers, they'll have us trained and then we'll go out and do those trainings.
So it doesn't include every employee, correct? Because it says, to have an accessible base system is 1,700 active employees.
Yes, it's for every employee. And one of the nice things about it is that it's a very user-friendly interface, which allows for each employee to have a profile, have their own login and account, and they'll be able to access their own information and make their information current a lot easier versus having to visit HR or having to call in and bring in the documents in person. There's an interface or an online platform that's called the, what is it, the software, where is it? The DocWonder Paperless Web Module, where they'll be able to upload these documents, which will probably replace our E files, and then we will have an electronic file of all this paperwork, which is really awesome.
So 1,700 is total number of employees we have?
Yes, approximately. And that includes all of our tutors, our campus noon supervisors, our walk-on coaches and everyone included.
So if I could make an alignment, would this be something similar to what we do with our students with Ares?
That is correct. It's like an information system. That is correct.
And that, how has that helped us?
Has Ares helped us? Well, you know, depends on who you ask, but you know, it makes the information a lot more available for administrators, for teachers, it puts everything online. For parents, you know, they're able to access their child's information. There's a variety of ways to communicate in addition to, you know, email or just logging in. You know, you have the ability for text messaging and you name it. There's a variety of things that we can do. So it's a great information system.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a first, we have a second. What is the student preferential vote? Do you have any questions?
No, all of mine, all of mine were answered. I approve.
Approve, okay. Thank you. Please place your votes.
Don't give it a little presentation.
I'm stuck. Okay. Motion passes 5-0. We are now moving on to 11.2. Approve the Adult Education Affiliation Agreement with Walgreens. What are the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a first by Paul Causian and we have a second by Yolanda Rodriguez Peña. Do we have any questions?
Can you explain that? Can somebody explain that?
Right. I'll try. Our adult education students are in a variety of different, a number of them are in a variety of different health career courses. One is called Certified Nursing Assistant, so they can be, get a certificate and they can employ it that way. There's another program for billing and coding, learning basically how to bill insurance companies for reimbursement for medical expenses. There's a pharmacy technology. And one of the components of their training is to get real-life experience. And so we have partnerships and contracts or agreements with a variety of different convalescent homes or assisted living places. In this case, it's with Walgreens and so they have their pharmacy there. And so students will be able to get some real-life experience, which will help them when they go out to get a job.
Wonderful. Okay. So with that said, what is the student preferential vote?
Approved.
Approved. Awesome. Okay. Place your votes. Motion passes 5-0. This now brings us to our study session and we are on 12.1. And our study session tonight is on metrics. And Mr. Arturo Dega.
Metrics.
Metrics. How are you, sir?
Good evening, good evening. Thank you, President Harmio, board members, Dr. Kaminsky. If you haven't buttoned your seatbelt yet, you might want to do that. We're going to take you on a little journey and we're excited to be here today to talk about our board study session on metrics.
The first thing is that you will notice that in our title, it states, "Metrics, Prototyping and Continuous Improvement." So you might be asking yourself, why would we put prototyping and continuous improvement in our title? Well, for starters, I think that you know, because I've said it over and over, that we firmly believe that we're never quite done and that we're never at a place of complete satisfaction or complacency. And so we're always continuously challenging ourselves to think of ways in which we can improve and build on our work, whether that's systems, procedures, products. Closer?
Yeah, because otherwise they can't hear you on the video.
Oh, am I? Sorry. All right. So anyways, challenging ourselves to think of ways that we can improve and build on our work, whether that's a product, a process, a system, or in this case, metrics. Prototyping, the second part of our title, as you're going to experience today, is focusing on a small component of a bigger picture or a small piece of a bigger project and placing all of your emphasis and work into the small component to test out, to try out, to get some feedback to throw out there so that we can get some good information, learn from that, and then apply that to the bigger picture.
So this idea of focusing on this one small component will allow you in the end to get to a stronger and clearer place with your whole project. So you test it out, you get the feedback and then you scale it up to your final product and ultimately, you're saving time and you're saving errors. So with this in mind, we've done a lot of thinking about how to improve not only metrics, the collection, but the communication and the use of metrics as well in our district.
So as we considered a prototype for metrics, as we considered, you know, what would be the steps? What would that prototype look like? How do we continuously improve that? We asked ourselves lots of different questions, like who are these metrics for? What would these metrics contain? Where would we house these metrics? Where would you find them? Who would be able to find them? When and how often would these metrics need to be reported and communicated and to whom? Why would we create a prototype and what would we use that for?
So these five why questions really helped us come up with kind of the best strategy and plan for a Zusa Unified School District. Ultimately, we landed on the idea of the LCAP because it already calls out metrics and it can really serve as a vehicle for our goals in collecting, communicating and using metrics. So we want to share with you right now, we're going to pass out with our lovely friend, Dr. Dana Mitchell will help, pass out a prototype from Goal Four of our LCAP. Our LCAP has five goals and we report on all five. So this, again, as a prototype, is just taking a section of that and that selection is Goal Four. So we'll wait for a minute and people in the audience who would like a copy can kind of wave and we'll definitely have that delivered to you.
Okay, so now that everybody has a copy of this, first and foremost, I want to tell you what this is, okay? In January, we produced an LCAP update. That was presented at a board meeting, that was made public, it currently sits on our website. And that breaks down each goal and gives an update on how we're doing so far on those specific goals. Yes? What we did is we took that old document, it's old now, it was January, we took out Goal Four, left the rest over here, and Goal Four is what we prototyped. All right? So this is what you're seeing today. You're going to see, that's what you're seeing today. So this in and of itself is not brand new, right? Because we provided you versions of this in the past. But this prototype has improved metrics, we believe, and an improved layout. As a quick reminder, our LCAP Goal Four focuses on increasing parent and student leadership, engagement and a positive perception. That's what Goal Four is around in the LCAP. And remember that although this is a prototype, the reason we're prototyping is because we're looking for feedback that will be critical as we look to scale this up to the other four goals in the LCAP. So what we'd like to do today is take you through a journey of this prototype Goal Four from the LCAP and make stops along the way of this journey and highlight for you the new things that are in this prototype.
So our first highlight begins on page, it says 15 and 16, it's actually the first and second page, because remember, this is just a section of the larger LCAP update. So in previous updates, we always had our written introduction portion of the particular goal, but in this prototype, in addition to the written introduction, we, you will see what we call our from-space view. And what that means is really looking at some of the data from that wide lens up above. And it begins, some of the summary data begins, as you can see, with this first circle graph that outlines the LCAP budget for Goal Four. So you see that our entire LCAP budget for Goal Four is $1,554,000, $127, sorry. And then in January, we had expended $548,781. At our April update, we will have expended $1,021,800. And that leaves us with a balance of $533,119 left to spend for the remainder of this year. So that's our first big outer space view of our budget.
And so to continue, again, the space view, right? This view from up above, this is just big picture data. We move here to student engagement. So here you have summary data on our local climate survey, on our engagement indicators and our attendance rates. So here in the local climate survey, just really quickly as a part of an introduction, you'll notice that in regards to how students feel, do they feel safe at our schools, you'll notice that 81% of our elementary kids say yes, they feel safe at school. Secondary kids, that drops down to 60%. Do students feel connected to school? You'll notice that 94% of elementary kids say they feel connected to school. Secondary, 91% feel that they're connected to school. In regards to our engagement indicators, again, big picture from outer space. In regards to chronic absenteeism, we're at 9%. Suspension rate, we're at 2.2%. And expulsion rate, we're less than 1%. And it's also critical to know that this data that you see right here is like right now. This is not end-of-the-year data, this is live data as the most current data that we have.
But you're talking about two and three, right? Not the first one? The climate survey?
We are.
That's stat, I mean, that's a survey administered once a year.
Yep, once a year, once a year. And then our attendance rate currently sits at 96.2%. And then our attendance rate currently sits at 96.2%. On page 16, you're going to notice some big outer space data regarding parent engagement. So you'll see that this school year, we had 1,101 parent survey respondents, right? Over 1,000 parents that responded to our survey. In regards to safety and connectedness, you'll see that in regards to...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Arturo.
Yes?
Is that the survey that they took online?
Yes.
From, this is from there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And this is, we're going to get into more detail on this, but this is English and Spanish. With the parents, you'll notice that 72% of parents feel that they have input in decision-making overall. 68% of parents' perceptions are high in regards to safety. And 75% of parents have high perceptions of connectedness. Again, high level introduction to Goal Four. If you don't want to read any further, at least you get like an overview of how we're doing in Goal Four.
So is that they're connected to their schools or their students, their belief of their students' connection to our schools?
Of themselves.
Their, of their own connection?
Yes. Our second highlight, or our second stop in our journey, is right here on page 16. And what we want to highlight here in this prototype, in the cycle of continuous improvement, is that we have now done an Update One and an Update Two split. Okay? In the past, this just used to be a continuum, right? So you would get this and you had no idea where we were. Is this a January, April? And so this split that you see right here on page 16, you'll see that it makes it clearly delineated where we were in January and where we are now in April.
So both of the updates now give you kind of a new, bigger view of what's going on, especially with this qualitative data that really adds to and augments the quantitative data, provides a deeper understanding of why things are the way they are. Excuse me. One of the things you'll notice is that you'll have the two rows for each action and service. So you have your January descriptor and then below, you'll have one for your April update. And again, giving you a clearer, deeper understanding of the progress that's going on with our LCAP throughout an entire academic year. Likewise, when you look at the expenditures, as Arturo mentioned, we've split it and you do see two columns, one with the expenditures just for that action and service for our January update, and then the second update in April gives you another expenditure amount. So you're seeing them side by side.
So is that cumulative, so that second one includes this expenditure?
Yes, those are cumulative. So this type of process with the two columns for your expenditures and the two rows for your qualitative data continues on for every action and service throughout the entire report. It goes all the way to page 19. At the bottom of page 19 then, is your final budgetary expenditures for the entire goal.
So we feel that by splitting it, not only the qualitative data, but also the budget, it gives you a truer picture. Like it's a little clearer and stronger in regards to when you're looking to compare where we were in January to where we are in April.
Absolutely. So, it's a great job. I just want to commend you for the work. But for me to better understand as to, what is the Goal Four example? If we look at the communication piece that we are sending out all these flyers, and in April, we're just saying, it's an update as to where it is. So what is the outcome from that? How are we catching the results of that? As in, if the idea is that we're trying to promote our programs with the anticipation that we get students in, correct?
Absolutely.
At least one goal of that, aside from the fact that we're publicizing it, correct?
Correct. So if I can put that question in pause through this journey and then at the end, I'm hoping to address that. Okay?
So I'd like to direct you now to page 20, not 19. The document grew. So here you're going to notice that we're going to move from our out-of-space, out-of-space kind of large view, we're slowly moving in now to what we might call the "sky view" of the metrics that are associated with LCAP Goal Four. So you're getting into some more of the data and getting a closer view of those things listed in our LCAP that we are tracking for that purpose.
Can I just ask a question regarding flyers? So how is Peach Jar working now? Or is there a... Because I'm assuming not everyone has internet and, you know, if they're not getting it by hard copy. How is these parents getting the information across? Or, I mean, do you have any problems with it? Or I haven't heard any update on Peach Jar actually, how it's working. And I'm curious to see that.
While tonight I'm not presenting the survey results, one of the questions was about Peach Jar, but I think Tim can actually give you even more detail.
Okay, no, because I'm thinking parent engagement and, you know, parent contact, that's why.
Sorry, so what was the question exactly?
How is Peach Jar working? Haven't had an update on that. Are parents, since they don't have a hard copy, are more parents participating? Is it less? Are they, you know, how is that whole Peach Jar working for us?
Well, we deliver Peach Jar flyers to approximately 7,500, I believe, parent email addresses. So they're receiving the Peach Jar flyer, whether they're...
Oh, you send them to their email also?
That's how it arrives to them.
Oh, okay. You know, I actually thought that the parent had to look on their phone at the app and get it.
No, no. It comes into their inbox. And then also, copies of the Peach Jar flyers are archived for a minimum of one month.
Well, is there a way that the board members can get those flyers? Because I need to always keep looking, if I want to go somewhere, you know, look at one of the school sites. What is it possible? You can add the board members' emails to that and we can receive them?
Certainly look into that for you, yeah.
So that is possible? You can add us?
I will look into that. I don't know that it's possible. Because Peach Jar pulls our mailing list from Ares. On a weekly basis, it's updated from Ares weekly.
And then does the system allow to access via text message? Because I know that's a preference versus email for many of our parents.
No, it derives only in email.
Only email?
Yeah, yes, email addresses.
And the app, which app?
The Ares mail.
Because when I go to the Ares do app and I click, I want to participate in every single school site, I don't, it's blank. I don't see any flyers. And I've done it several times.
Correct. On the app, there's no flyers on there, just to click Peach Jar, it's...
And I've gone in and I've selected every school site.
Yeah, it's empty.
To get updates.
Right. So if you can please look into see if we can receive them or put them on the app.
Definitely, I'll look into see if we can expand the list.
Yeah, thank you.
Now that we're on that subject, I just want to point a clarification as well, because I know there was an incident, a situation where the Parks and Recs every Christmas, for example, Sir Optimist or other organizations, do want to distribute some flyers. And I think they've been told that they're not allowed to. Right? Physical.
No, I have not told them that. We've offered them Peach Jar services largely for free if they're advertising any event that does not draw people in to pay a fee. And it's not for a money-making reason.
It's nonprofit.
I just want to make it clear that...
They can use Peach Jar for free, which we've made them aware of several times.
Yeah, so it's at no cost to us. I think they're taking the initiation to provide the flyers at each site and distribute them, right? So I know that there's a lot of programs over Christmas, for example, Parks and Recs has their own printed versions and they bring it over to the school sites and then it's distributed, physical flyers. So I just want to make sure that that's not interfering with what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, I'm not aware of anyone being turned down.
If I can add, actually that eventually came to my desk and we did authorize just the regular distribution as normal at school sites.
Yeah, I just wanted us to be clear, because Dr. Dickerson was just talking about it last time as well. She informed me that she was told she cannot distribute.
So is there an internal process for that, Linda?
Well, in looking into it with Tim, apparently Peach Jar themselves, in their contract, specified that no, we don't distribute paper copies, it all goes through them. But because of, there are partnerships that have been in place for a long time, for whom it is much easier for them to distribute, such as the Parks and Rec, I just overwrote that and said, no, we have to accommodate that. I hadn't heard about the Homework House one, but if that's still an issue, I'll certainly look into it and see.
But also, Dr. Kaminsky, Golden Days, when I went to the last meeting, they asked me, when they pass out their flyers, do they need to go through Peach Jar? You can speak to Mercedes Castro.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, please.
Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Okay, so this is highlight number three. And like Jen said, we are going from space, that introduction, that big picture, and we're hovering down now to the sky. And so update number three is around this table on page 20. What you will notice here is this is a list of all of the metrics that currently exist in the LCAP for Goal Four. Right? So Goal Four, I believe it's 13, if I'm not mistaken. Goal Four has 13 actions and services. Those 13 actions and services, Director of Communications, the flyers, Families and Schools, like all of that stuff that happens in Goal Four, all get funneled into these metrics right here. Okay? These are the ones that are approved on our current LCAP. So, that's number one. The highlight here is that we have added a 2017, 2018 April update. So that second to the last column, this column right here, this is a brand-new column. Again, in the past, you would not have received this column. We just would have updated these numbers and that's it. By adding this second column, you get a truer sense of the representation of the data. For instance, district attendance rate, let's take that first metric. When we ended 1617, we ended with a 96% attendance rate. In January, we had a 97% district attendance rate. If this would have been the old way, we just would have changed that number to 96.2. Yes, you could have gone back to update number one in January and looked at that to compare, but right here, we're putting it right here, right in front. So even though we're at 96.2% now, which is higher than last year and already meets our target, it's still 0.8% lower than we were in January. So adding this column right here, again, gives you the data right in front of you without having to go back to LCAP update number one in January and just gives you a better sense of where we are.
So if the target is, you know, it's clear, we want to make sure that we want to have attendance rate that's 100%, right? That's easy to formulate. And how did you determine about the 55% for parent decision-making perception agree? So how do you come up with that 55%?
So the current metrics that we have, the targets that Mr. Caution is referring to, which is the last column here, those are patterns that have existed in the LCAP since the LCAP was first created. So what we try to do is we're always trying to up the ante, to see where we're at, either by, depending on what the metric is. We are meeting with LCAP leads, we're looking, we're going through with the PAC Plus. We do know that with the PAC Plus, this is an area of emphasis that we need to get better at, because right now we've been focusing on budget and actions and services and not so much metrics. And so that's something that we've already talked about that we need to strengthen, but these are patterns from the LCAP as we move year to year to year of increasing these targets to meet those targets.
So in terms of the parent perception of satisfaction and of safety and connectedness, so in our current LCAP, that is one item that we're looking at? I mean, in the current LCAP with outcomes, that's, those are grouped together?
That is correct.
So, and I know you're going to get later on to some more segregated data, but in terms of this piece, I think because in light of the fact that there's a big gap between the responses in terms of connectedness versus safety, I think we might want to think about in the upcoming year, separating those, because I think, I love having the goal of 90%, but we're a lot closer under one of those than the other. And I think maybe it merits being called out even at this top level.
Okay, perfect. So, this brings us to our last stop of our journey in this LCAP Goal Four prototype.
Aww.
I know. I feel the same way. So, again, we were in space, the introduction, the big graphs, then we came down to the sky, this table that gets closer down to where we at. And now, we want to move it down to the ground level. This is probably the biggest highlight of tonight. We think that all of the highlights are important, but this is probably the most, the biggest impact, if you will. So if we move on to page 20, sorry, page 21, page 21. What we have done is we have taken the first metric from page 20, which was district attendance rate, yes? And on page 21, we have expanded that attendance rate for every school and every student group. So now, here on page 21, you will notice that the attendance rate, you get it for every school in Alpha and every student group. And we're going to walk you through these tables, Jen's going to begin, but for every single metric on page 20, that sky view, we have done a table like this.
So looking at page 21, again, you see that the vertical axis are the schools listed alphabetically. The top, excuse me, the top row is for all district, so you have that snapshot as well. And then across the horizontal axis at the top, you see our different student groups, whether it be by program or ethnicity. One of the things you'll notice, for example, is across the top, you see the attendance for the entire district, all of the different groups. And then you get to the group Pacific Islander and you notice an asterisk. So the asterisk means there are too few students to make up that metric or to report on that metric. And we do this in order to protect the privacy, especially since we're recommending that this be a public document. We also want to be very cognizant of protecting the privacy rights of our students. So you'll see those asterisks where we have low populations or no population. So you'll see the asterisks throughout. Also, you'll notice the green highlighting. Now, the green is indicated at the bottom, that is the target from the previous page of metrics. So what you're seeing are groups or schools who are currently meeting or exceeding the target for attendance. Now, keep in mind this green, this attendance is just a local measure, this is not anything that's coming from the state as our official state attendance rate. So attendance is changing every single day. So the boxes that are green may not necessarily always stay green. The boxes that are not green may become green as the year progresses. But this again, gives us just kind of an indicator of where we are in a certain point in time during the year. The next table.
So, so let's pause here, though. So this is very helpful, just as a visual graph. So getting back to Paul's question, how do we intend to use this data? Getting back to your question about what data is for whom and for what purpose, how do we intend to use this level of data?
So if I can back up one step really quick and just, our plan today is to show you this prototype.
Okay.
Right? Get feedback, ideas, suggestions, and then go from there. But in creating the prototype, it is very clear and very evident that this type of on-the-spot, right-now, up-to-date data would be helpful, obviously, well, I shouldn't say obviously, but to our school sites. well, I shouldn't say obviously, but to our school sites, would be helpful to the Outcap leads that currently man, you know, certain, particular metrics, and would, would be, would be a starter conversation for schools that, or student groups that are particularly far off of the target. And kind of bring that data up to, up to light so that we can kind of formulate some action steps and address some of the outliers that, you know, some of the outliers wouldn't be 95.9%, but some outliers might be 89.6%, right? And so just to have those conversations and these, these datas that we can have actionable, that we can take some action on.
Right, because I mean, I would look at this data, and I would say, okay, look, obviously with students with disabilities, our African-American students, and our white students, I mean, those jump out to me in terms of like different subgroups that, that, while some of it is not as low as others, I mean, those are all lower than the ones that are lines of green.
Sure, yeah.
So, so how do you intend, so in terms of moving forward with this, how, how are those people that you reference, and I would include the board? How, how are they going to, and maybe you're going to get to this later, like how do you intend to have, have this accessible to them on demand?
Yep. So we, we will, we're going to get to a timeframe at the end.
Okay.
So, so as you look at the attendance, the percent, so this would help you know if you need to go to school site, or you need to, you know, improve, how do they improve their attendance? Because I do know the liaison, they, they have meetings once a month, right? The, the attendance house check, I guess you call it, and they go to the homes. And the other day, I went to Paramount, and the first graders, they were giving perfect attendance awards. And those little kids, you know, it's good to start when they're so young. But I think things like that, where they give students awards, and it could even be up to high school, I feel it doesn't just go there. It's great to start when they're so young. But to continue to recognize them for their accomplishments, may it be attendance, may it be academic, and I think this would help at least, you know, where, right? You need to go, or who needs assistance or, or help?
Absolutely.
So the, the following charts, after attendance, you see a chart for chronic absenteeism. And again, similar with the listing of the school sites, the student groups, and then the rates. And with chronic absenteeism, it's one of the things we want to keep low. Opposite of attendance, where we want a high rate is, is what's good. Chronic absenteeism, we're searching for a low rate, and our target is, is less than 5% by the end of the year. But again, we are looking at where it is, just the snapshot in time in the spring where we are with chronic absenteeism in our district. Just a little note on chronic absenteeism. Absent counts do include suspensions and incomplete independent study, which is also what the state, the state counts. And as much as possible, we try to align with the way the state measures things. Sometimes we can't.
And does this still include students? We'll say that, you know, maybe they have a reason why they're home, or they have a certain illness.
These are all absences. Excused and unexcused.
Excuse me?
These are all absences.
Unexcused.
All absences.
Okay. Oh, oh, totally, okay.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question? I know you blocked out the groups, the groups that are below a certain, a certain number, and number, but they still have colors associated with them?
You mean the red and the white?
The red and the whites?
The red and the white is just simply for visual, to guide your eye between the rows, and also to align to the Goal Four is red. If you remember from the previous Outcap, each goal has a color code to kind of make it easy for you to move between the document and find particular goals. So the red is just simply aesthetics and align to Goal Four.
So red and whites mean nothing, it's just?
Correct.
Green and not green.
Correct.
So if this was, for instance, Goal One, I'm not memorizing them, these would be purple. And then another goal would be, you know, just, that's the way we did the Outcap update, so that when you're flipping through the update, you would know which goal you were on.
So I think, I mean, I think this is a great start. I mean, I would, I would just recommend you go back and think about, if we're focusing on continuous improvement and we want to see growth, how do we have, I would say, metrics that can exemplify that, so that you don't have just yes, no, black and white? Right? I mean, in this case, it's green or not green. But if you, if you have places where, I mean, if you have more, more benchmarks within this, I think it makes it clearer. I mean, you, you can see better, like where there maybe needs work, maybe there's a lot more work needed, you know? So that's what, that would be my recommendation.
Suspension rate is the next chart. And again, it's another level that we want to keep low. So we're looking to be under 2%. And again, really the same layout as the previous chart with the schools and the student groups.
So is this saying that Murray School's never had any suspension?
This is, this is right now.
Up to, up to this day.
Up to this day, this year.
Up to this date, right.
During this year.
Right.
No, it's saying there's too few of them to, to show where they are. That's why they're at the top.
Okay.
And this is, she's looking at, oh, suspensions or expulsion?
I'm looking at 23, page 23.
Okay. Suspension.
Yes, that's what it means.
That's what that means?
I was at the wrong page, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. We're dancing. Expulsion rate, given the, the very few numbers of this and, and the privacy factors, you'll see just only a district level for expulsion rate. And this is a current expulsion rate at the top. You can see it's 2017-18. Then if you go on to page 25, you'll see a chart that looks very different, because we're moving into a different metric for Outcap Goal Four. And this is our survey participation. And with the surveys, I'll, I'll kind of note now that we, we actually have two different surveys that go on. We have our, and they are both kind of local climate surveys. One is the California Healthy Kids Survey. And then we also have the annual district survey that are, that we just took here for this year, just a week or so ago it closed. So that data's still being disaggregated and, and analyzed. So you're seeing a little bit of both here. For example, the participation rate on the top of page 25 is the current 2017-18 annual district survey participation rate for parents, because we know that's one of the metrics of Goal Four. And you can see across all of the school sites. So the schools now have been shifting their axes up to be the horizontal axes, and you can see the, the raw numbers there, participation. Below that, with the district annual survey preliminary results, we also see parents' perceptions of...
I'm sorry, if I can go, just go back to the participation.
Yes.
Oh, so you got all this through the surveys, the particip, not necessarily the person?
The ones that just finished, yeah. I just pulled those numbers to put them in here real quick. So the, the parent decision-making perceptions are listed below that, and you can see all parents for all schools. And then what I did was I broke it down by level of participation, just as I, again, began to dig into this data, wanting to look at some of the differences. So you have all parents, and then you also have just the parents that participate in PAC+ and their perceptions of their decision-making. And then parents that say they are part of ELAC or DELAC. And then below that, parents that I termed engaged parents. These would be parents that are involved in some way, whether it be a school-site council, or they volunteer at their child's school. And then I created a, a non-engaged parent category. And these were parents that selected that they had not been part of any of the above list of activities. So this gives you a little bit of a breakdown there for the perceptions of parents. On page 26, you'll see our California Healthy Kids Survey connectedness perceptions of our, our students at the top. And again, you have the two, the two questions. And I broke it down by the grade levels that take the California Healthy Kids Survey, which is five, seven, nine, and 11. Just on a note, we had our students, middle school students, for the first time this year, take the annual district survey. So we'll have data for grade six through 12. Below the connectedness perceptions for students, you have the annual student survey results from just this current survey of this year. Physical safety, emotional safety, and positive connection to school. And then below is the parent perceptions, safety and connection separated out. And finally, the last chart of the, the ground-level data. Page 27, you have our dropout rate. And you have two charts here, and you may be noting that the dropout rate says 2015-2016. That's because the dropout rate is, is dependent on the state reporting where other students have gone. It's, it takes a cohort of kids. In this case, it's the kids that were freshmen in 2012, 2013. And it's an average, and it counts where they go. And so we are currently waiting on the 2017 results for graduation and dropout. So I did at least provide you for the sample and for this prototype, so you could see some of the data in here and what it would look like. And that's one of those metrics that we do have to wait on, because we don't have all of that information.
So to kind of loop back a little bit, you know, to some of the, the questions, just really quick, if you would, right? Space, right? Big picture, nothing in the weeds, right? Just space. Then I come down, and I get to the sky level. This is what we have promised our community and our stakeholders that we were going to measure and report on. This is in our Outcap, right? There's no escaping this. In future years, absolutely, we can change this, we can, you know, do whatever we want to. But our approved Outcap right now says, hey, guys, this is what we're going to measure. Now, what we've said is that these things here measure the 13 actions and services here. Right? And so, again, this can always be changed and edited for upcoming school years, right? If we wanted to have a metric for each action and service, right? Which I'm not recommending, but we can, right? Because this is just Goal Four. This is 13, 13 different actions and services. And the Outcap says, you can, you can put whatever metrics you want, but these you must do. So there are some must metrics that we have to put in the Outcap, no matter how we cut it, slice it, or dice it. And then we can add more if we wanted to. And remember, this is just Goal Four. There's a Goal One, there's a Goal Two, there's a Goal Three, and there's a Goal Five that also come with, you know, a, a list of metrics as well. Okay?
Now, your, your journey, it was a long one, so thank you. We, we appreciate you allowing us the opportunity to share our thoughts regarding this, this Goal Four prototype and our cycle of continuous improvement. Before we go to the feedback portion, I want to point out that there's one more highlight for you, and it's not one that's visible in the document. So it wasn't part of our little journey that we just took. But highlight five is that we would create a third update next year. Currently, there are two, one in January, one in April. And our thoughts would be that we would provide one in October. And this October update would be kind of an actuals from the previous year. One that will update on the actuals of, of the actions, the services, the budget, and, and the metrics as available. And so that would be our, our plan for that third update.
So, so the idea is that right now, you know, when we, when we do the Outcap at the end, we do have to do what's called the, the annual update, right? But that's a, that's a narrative that is not as crystal clear as, as, as something like this. Right? So we think that that October would serve like a culminating, I know it's, it's October, but we, we depend on the state, we depend on AP, IB, SAT, we depend on all these other external entities to collect data. And sometimes it takes a very long time. So that's why we're saying October, that we would get a report that said, okay, this is how it all shook down. Right? Because right now, you get this in April, and then you're left wanting to know, well, how much of this 533-119 did we actually spend down? Right? And so that, that October one would take us back to this year. And then, like Jennifer said, it would kind of be our actuals of last year's Outcap, if you will. Okay? So, at this point in time, we want to just kind of open it up for feedback, questions, suggestions, ideas. Because we have our work cut out for us, right? Whatever those feedbacks or ideas are, then we got to go apply, we have, we have to go create this for Goals One, Two, Three, and Five.
I'd like to thank you. This actually works well with my brain. I guess that's the only way I can put it. I mean, I, I can just look at it and just have the information that I need. So I really appreciate all that work. Like I said, it's, it matches my way of thinking and learning. So thank you.
Thank you. I, I still want to see the correlation. I'm, again, this is a great start. I commend for the work that you've put into this. For example, if, if I want to compare the schools as to suspension rate or expulsion or any number of this targets that we have, attendance rate. So to what extent, for example, if I, if I look at number nine, from what we're spending intervention mechanisms, what we have in place, we obviously increased the budget by April. So with that increase, what is the result of that? Have we lowered absenteeism, any number of those things that was the result of the intervention? How, how do we correlate that into understanding the data? Yes, we have a situation which is different at each school site. We can understand the environment. What are some other factors in those environments? Which could be one of these, for example, I don't know, I'm just saying. So how do we correlate the fact that intervention is working at Magnolia? So that we've lowered that from, I don't know, 5% to zero now, or two, whatnot?
Clarifying question, would you envision that that would, that that would be here? Would you envision that, like, so here in the, in the, in the qualitative data, that we would add some, like, some, some more additional, you know, verbiage on how, what impacts it's having? Do you envision that here, or do you envision that more like over here?
I, I...
Or are you, or are you leaving it up to us?
If, if I read it, for example, in the, in the graphs that you have here, the, the squares, so if I look at Magnolia, for example, right? So the percentage is much lower on the attendance rate. For example, I'm just giving one example hypothetically. As compared to other schools, which are much higher, for example. So if I want to understand that school site, to what extent, if I want to correlate that data, there's some issues with behavior, I don't know. One could deduce the fact that absenteeism is a correlation to that effect. So we're not saying that we're not going to do an intervention, but I just want to see whether or not the intervention has worked in, in context of one factor that could contribute to that. Could be many, I don't know. I'm just saying, if I wanted to read the data in that context. So that I would see the benefit of having intervention or encouraging intervention at every school site. Is that the reason why, I don't know, Longfellow is much higher as opposed to Magnolia? Okay?
So I, I wanted to set a larger context. First, I appreciate this work. I think, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great tool. I think it's a good start to think about how are we going to integrate continuous improvement in what we do? From the classroom or interaction with parents to the board level, right? How do we, how do we integrate the system so everyone is talking about the same things, with the appropriate data at whatever, whatever level they are? And then we all understand where we're, where we are, where we want to go, and how we're getting there? So, so I would, I would urge you to, when you look at this document, how does this help us do that? Right? So is this document designed to, to give to the board to get that information? I'm asking a question right now. Who, who is this document designed for right now?
This document is designed for our stakeholders. That includes the board, the parents, the community, our staff, everyone. This would, this would go public.
So I would just encourage you to think more, a little, I would think about what, what do people need in those different positions to be able to make this digestible? Right? So the information that we need at a board level is very different from what the parents need, which is completely different to what a teacher needs in their classroom. Especially if you're talking about chronic absenteeism, you know? So I would encourage us to think about how do, if we're, if we're, as we go this route, how are we going to address those individual needs? But I want, so that, so that's my feedback to you in terms of this. I think this is a really great start. I, I want to echo Paul, and I want to, I, I feel especially at the board level that it really needs to be connected to those outcomes, right? So, so in terms of the outcomes that we're looking at, and I know you're looking a little puzzled. So, but I, so, but, but let me get to why I'm saying that. Because I feel like we do, we're, we're approving an Outcap annually, right? And it has action and services. And I would like us to spend... And I would like us to spend, and I know we already do this, but I would like to be able to articulate it at a board meeting and be able, so we're all understanding, how are we evaluating the effectiveness of the implementation of the, of these actions and services that we're, that we're implementing? And as we evaluate effectiveness, are we using that to identify where we can make improvements? Are we looking to see, well, then maybe this is actually not really working? I know we, you have to give time for things to be implemented. Obviously, this is a new system. It hasn't been in effect for that many years. But how are we using the system to do that continuous improvement? And so that's the part that I'm talking about in terms of how do we attach those outcomes to this? And it, and I would, I'm not sure that at the board level, that, that analysis doesn't happen on a quarterly basis, right? I mean, I think, I think that's maybe more annual basis. I would, but I would defer to you in terms of figuring out when that has to happen, at what level, right? Decisions that's, that teachers and principals make are very different and happen at a much more rapid pace than happen at the board level.
So just for clarification, right? Just so I can wrap my head around. So are we suggesting that for every action and service, so for here, 13 of them, that we would have some kind of outcome metric or, you know?
So that, so this gets to my second point that I wanted to make with you. And I just wanted to refer to the fact that we had a governance retreat last weekend, right? Where we were trying, we were talking about looking at the actual goals that we have and really taking a deep dive, really being reflective and, and really just looking at whether or not our goals that we have on the outcap are what are called, at least at the very basis, smart, right? Strategic, strategic, measurable, attainable, relevant, and timely, right? And I think I, I was struggling in terms of how do we make these goals, that's, make them be smart, right? And, and actually, I felt really uncomfortable doing that because I feel like us as a five or six with our governance team, making those decisions completely disconnected to the actual work that you guys are doing, doesn't make any sense, right? So, so getting to your point about, do we need this for 13 services? I would say, I'm, I'm hoping that we can turn to you and say, what are really the goals, what are these high-level goals at the district level that we should all be aspiring to, right? So maybe at the board level, it doesn't mean there's 13 of them that have to report it on at a quarterly basis. But maybe at a school site, there's more of them, right? Because they're, they're tracking more things. But thinking about how can we have a system where everyone has common understanding of what our goals are? And can easily, getting back to the work that you guys have done reading the Foleman book, right? With coherence. Can, can we just rattle off, what are, what are our goals for the district? Right? He recommends that you have three goals for a district. Can we rattle that off? I would turn to, to my fellow board members, can we rattle off those three main goals?
I can.
I would like us all to be able to do that, right? So what are they?
Student achievement, English learners, college and career readiness, student and parent engagement, and facilities.
Okay, so-
Those are five goals.
So, so, so those are the goals, right? So how do we turn those into smart goals? And I would say, I would turn to you and say, help us, do that, bring, and bring us recommendations on that so that we can all be on the same page.
Sure. And I, I'm not at all advocating, right? But I'm just saying, so the way I see it is this, right? So this is goal four, parent and student engagement.
Okay.
Right? This is our, our big goal, right? The way we, we, our smart goals, the way we measure this big goal four is on page 20. This is how we measure goal four. Now, how do we get to this? Well, there's 13 actions and services that we do that. But, but we're not monitoring like, like every single action and service, we're monitoring these. And if there's a hiccup, then we need to go back to those actions and services and say, wait a minute, there's a hiccup here, let's go back to these 13 actions and services. Are they really producing what we said that we're going to produce, right? So we have a big goal, goal four. These are our smart goals right here. This is what we are tracking and we're, we're monitoring. And we're going to go deep dive into those, right? But this is just a road, in my opinion, this is a roadmap of how we get to here, right? This, this is really the, where the rubber meets the road, right? These right here are just steps to try and get to this. So if I say in here, right, that we have nurses, that we're funding nurses out of the outcap, that, we're saying that that action of nurses is helping attendance rate, right? Because they're working with families and they're doing that monthly, you know, visits, or they're sitting in on SSTs, or they're sitting in on SARS, or they're sitting in IEPs. And so that action of having a nurse is helping attendance rate or chronic absenteeism. Maybe it's help, it's, it's helping with student perception in regards to feel safe at school.
So, so how do we need that each, how do we know that each site needs additional intervention? Based on what? What are some of the criterias? If you believe, which we are agreeing upon the fact that suspension and expulsion has to do some with emotional, social issues that students might have, so we have to have an intervention program? And how is that equally done at every site? Or vice versa? What are some of the needs could be much needed in one site as opposed to others? How do you factor those in to get to all the top four that you're talking about, for example?
So I'm going to answer that outside of this, right? So for instance, one thing that we're currently doing right now with, Aaron is, is kind of heading this, right? We just landed a 25?
$25,000.
A $25,000 grant for multi-tiered system of support to look at how systematically we are supporting our kids, not only academically, right? That's, that's our thrust, right? That's one of our thrusts, that's goal one. But also in socio-emotional aspects and wellness. And so that's, that's a work that, that we're currently working on, we're, we're currently developing. We're going to prototype with some schools this up and coming school year to get to some kind of systematic measure of that. But, and then to go back to the school thing, right? So, so we're, we're back here, we have a goal. These are our smart goals. This is what we said we're going to do. This is where all, all of our energy and focus should be here, right? But then we also want to dive deeper and get boots on the ground to say, this is helpful from the sky, but it's not going to help me with, just to use your example, not to pick on, but your Magnolia. Like if there was, like, wait, what's going on here, Magnolia? You lose that here, right? You can't, you can't see Magnolia here. It's not until we turn here that we start looking at that. And again, those conversations and those action plans start to come into play.
So let's use an example that is in here, right? So, so I would, I would, of all the pieces in here, I would look at student, students, students and parents feeling safe, right? And so then my question would be, what do we do with that data and where are we going with that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I don't have the answer to that, but this is the starting point, right? So we're looking at this data and, and we're starting to disaggregate it, it's like, there's a red flag right there, right? There's a red flag right there. And so how do we start addressing that as a means because this, because of this data?
I think it's very simple. Not simple, but I think that, that, I think we might be like overthinking this a little bit too much because I think that what we asked for at the board level was exactly what you delivered tonight. And it's, it's, it's the data, it's the pieces that we need to look at. And for us to look at these numbers, not annually, now we have a breakdown, we're now, we're talking about three, three, three opportunities during the year that we can, we can look at this now, right? And we can ask you questions. So now we get to see, and we get to look at this and go, okay, now this isn't just us going, oh my goodness, this is the, and this is once a year, and what's going on? Now you've broken it down for us to a point where we can actually have a conversation with you and do exactly what we're doing right now. So I think that we're, we're, we might be overthinking things a little bit. I think, like I said, I think you, you delivered exactly what we had been asking for tonight. I'm, I'm not confused at all. I, I totally get it. So, but I think it's a, it's a good piece for us to, to build on. And for us to, to look at that at this level and be, and, and look at that and say, okay, well, that is a red flag. What is it that you're doing? The people that we trust and, and your experience and knowledge and expertise, what is it that you're doing out there, boots on the ground, to remedy that, address that? Why is this happening? And then come back to us and deliver that information. Am I, yeah? Okay.
Yeah, I'm also, I totally understand what you're, what you put in here. And I think, yeah, it, it's a map, you know? Red flags, what do we do about it? And so are any students ever being surveyed? Like, you know, how do they feel in school? This includes students and parents. Fantastic. That's good. Right, okay. So, so that's good, yeah. Because this is pretty much of a map and, you know, what are we doing up, up, like you're going to, where are you going, Jupiter or wherever you're going? You know, well, how do we land on the moon? What are we going to do? How do we help a different school? What is this school doing other than this? I mean, for me, I mean, I read it very clearly. Thank you, you did a very good job on this.
So as far as the conversation, you're having these conversations and your own staff, correct? As to what I'm-
Incorrect and correct. So the, the, the point of today was to show you a prototype. So yes, have we noticed stuff already? Absolutely. 100%.
No, I'm, I'm being sincere about this. I mean, this shouldn't become a reporting mechanism. It should become a, a dialogue in which if there are changes that needs to happen, I think that, that has to happen before it gets to the board even so.
100%.
So that the discussions that we're having about why, why are we where we are and where we're going has to have that, that substantive measure to it.
100%. 100%.
So I, so I, I mean, I don't want you to get the wrong impression. I think this is great. I mean, I value that. I'm really appreciate, I appreciate that you made it really clear right now what those goals are, right? So we, as a board, I mean, I don't want us to waste time trying to focus on developing goals and we feel like the goals that we have are smart. And they have smart metrics attached to them with, with very specific objectives. But I would, I would disagree in terms of process, thinking that we would just start with this and then feel like that's going to come to continuous improvement. I, I know, because I know the way you guys operate, that you're going to go and build this, you're building a system in terms of how we're going to use this. All I'm asking for is at the board level, that we understand what that system is and how that process works. But that's all I'm asking about in terms of as we, as you develop this, right? That there's also reporting in terms of how you intend to be using it at the different levels and how you, and how you expect that, that data to be available to people, those kind of specifics.
So this is like super premature, but I'm going to let the dog out of the hat?
Dog out of the hat.
I don't know.
Dog out of the house.
Sorry, cat out of the bag, sorry. So, so, so one of the things that we're concurrently working on, and again, this is super premature, but I'm going to do it anyway. So if, if I come back to this, right? This is what we're saying, this is the heart and soul right here, page 20, right? So right now, what we're doing is we've taken district attendance rate, right? And right now, we are working hand in hand, like bulldogs, with IO to come up with a dashboard where if I'm a teacher, I go to district attendance rate and I get this information for my classroom.
Good.
If I'm a principal, I log in and I get district attendance rate for my school like right now, like when I log in, right now. If I'm at the district level, I can see it by school, I can see it by, 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 you know, elementary versus secondary. And so right now, we are in the process, we already have a prototype, and we're probably 95% there. There's a couple of, you know, we don't-
We have some data that's inaccurate. We don't want to release anything, even if it's not impacting the metric. It doesn't look right, the number of students we have and the certain subgroup, and I don't want to release that.
And the idea is that, again, as a principal, as a grade level, you know, whatever that be, that not, I'm not only seeing my site level data, but I can see it by student group, I can see it by grade level, I can see it by teacher. But again, I do say it's premature because again, we didn't, we didn't want to show or release something that is not working 100%. But we've, we've made a lot of, a lot of headway, number one. Number two, we've built a lot of relationships. And number three, I think that they are extremely clear, they're, they are very, very clear on what the vision is and the level of patience that is existing right now. The idea is that once that is created, just this one little guy right here, we're going to take all those learnings and now start applying them to these metrics. So that at whatever level, when I log in, I can see that metric and what it means to me, not what it means to the district, like, well, that means nothing to me. What is it for, for me in my classroom or for me in my school site? Again, that's a little bit, a premature preview.
That's all I was asking, so that's, that's great.
All right.
Do you have any other questions? Comments?
No, I say go forward.
Thank you very much.
Do you need direction from us or you feel like you got enough direction?
I think we, we had, we, we got enough. Again, we, we really sincerely want to thank you for your, your feedback, your conversations, your ideas, your questions. I do want to give a special thanks to this person right here, right next to me. She, she carried the, the heavy load. She carried the heavy load. This is probably, it's not a joke or funny, but this is probably like iteration number 19, right? If you would have seen the iterations previous, and this is compared to the first iterations, we went a long, long way. And then she probably hated it when I said, oh my gosh, wouldn't it be better if? Because she knew that was going to be a new amount of work. But as we, as we got feedback, as we, you know, started kind of just shooting around, it was a lot of work to get to this place, so I do definitely want to, want to thank her for that.
Thank you very much.
Well, thanks. I have a good leader to, to guide me and coach me, so thanks, boss. But again, we're a great team in this district office. Everybody is so supportive. I mean, Dana not only is a great sounding board, but she, she was our scribe tonight, jotting down all of your comments so that we'll be able to go back and, and so we can just listen and, and then we can really delve into those again. And, and so thank you also for handing out all of the, the forms to our honored guests here this evening. And then also, I have to thank Inga H. at the district office, a data queen, and just helping me pull stuff. And finally, the poor gentleman in our print shop who are so wonderful, I'm going to take them Starbucks cards because they're printing things without a two-week notice and all of that, so thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you, great job. So, as we're meeting, we are now adjourned, it's 10:25. Everyone drive safe and have a good night.